I'm calling this meeting back to order of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. I'm out of clothes, give me just a second. All right. Item 4.0, call back to order pledge of allegiance superintendent. Could you please guide us?
Yes. Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, superintendent, can you read the broadcast statement for us?
Actually, no.
Oh, student member Zane, do you have your broadcast statement with you? Oh, awesome, great, fantastic. I wish you were here. Go right ahead.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-First. Today's meeting will air Monday, February 21st at noon and Wednesday, February 23rd at 6:00 PM. It is also webcast at metro14live secundary.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. The public has been given the opportunity to address the board through public comment, either by submitting comments which are posted on our website or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting and submit a speaker form will be sent a link to participate. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to provide comment or leave. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up.
Thank you so much, student member Zane. Item 4.3 stellar student Christopher Locke, a sixth grade student from Pacific Elementary will be introduced by member Philip.
Hey there. We're introducing our stellar student this evening. I want to talk about Christopher Locke. He's at Pacific Elementary School. And this young man was nominated by his teacher and his school site principal. They all report that Chris excels at reading and math. Is it up? Hey, Christopher, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Well, I'm going to keep on talking about how they said you're kind and helpful and a valued member of your class community. And I just want to congratulate you for being our stellar student at the best elementary school among others. So, great job, Christopher. Thank you. You got anything to say?
Uh, just that this was unexpected.
Aw. Unexpected but well, well, well received, huh?
Yeah.
That's good. Well, thank you so much for being our stellar student this week. Keep up the good work.
Well deserved, Christopher, and I gotta say you have one of my favorite Disney cartoon backdrops right behind you. I love it.
Thanks.
Thanks so much. You take care. All right. Item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
Good evening, President Pritchett. There are two announcements coming out of closed session this evening. First, the board approved a special education settlement agreement identified as OAH case number 2021120398 by a vote of six to zero with Member Villa absent at the time. And the superintendent will give the other announcement.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I am pleased to announce that the board approved the following appointment by unanimous vote seven zero. The board approved the appointment of Mr. Reggie Brown as principal of John F. Kennedy High School. Congratulations, Mr. Brown.
All right, fantastic. I believe we have a public comment on item 5.0?
Yes, we have one public comment from Terrence Gladney.
Good evening, Terrence.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you guys for providing our school community at John F. Kennedy a much needed infusion of life and leadership. We look forward to partnering with Mr. Brown and also to him, welcome back to the, I mean, he never really left. He's still been in the footprint at John still, but welcome back to Green Haven. He was at MLK before. And we look forward to just honoring and restoring the legacy of excellence and achievement for all of our Kennedy students representing Green Haven Pocket and Metalview. It truly is my hope and my prayer that Reggie or Mr. Brown will be empowered and able to lead with vision, creativity and passion and won't be encumbered by the ongoing micromanagement and lack of leadership from the superintendent's office. While our district's HR department is not able to always complete exit interviews in a timely manner that respects outgoing talent's necessity to embark on their new journeys, I have been able to facilitate conversations with some of the outgoing talent. And the overwhelming sentiment is that our current superintendent does not lead but impedes, impedes leadership growth, engagement with staff and community. And I would hope that he would enable Mr. Brown to lead to the extent of his leadership and his experience. And I ask for your support as well as you guys' acknowledgement as well as superintendent's acknowledgement that we have lost far too much administratively talent. And once we acknowledge this reality, hopefully we can reverse course, loosen the reins and allow our school site personnel who are actually connected to our scholars, families and communities to lead our school sites. Your own fear of failure should not be the denominator in our scholars' academic, social and emotional experience. To Mr. Brown, welcome to Kennedy. Thank you for your leadership and go Cougars.
Thank you, Terrence. All right. Before I move on, I just want to say that it's good to be in person here with my colleagues in here on the board and our superintendent and including board members saying, so I was kind of wishing you were going to be here tonight. What you, what you cannot see is you are predominantly here stationed right next to me, the board president in the middle of the dais. This is symbolic, monumental and practical for it. In fact, I may be wrong, but I don't think this has ever, ever been done for in Sac City. So I can't wait for you to be here and be with us in person. Our students are why we are here and the voice of our students is absolutely critical to our decision making. So, thank you, student member Zane, for representing Sac City Unified School District or Sac City students. And we appreciate you being on the board. Working towards safely resuming fully in-person meetings, including board members and members of the public to hope, and we hope to do that in the near future. So just stay tuned. And then I want to address one topic that's been weighing heavily on our hearts and minds of all board members. The troubling graffiti that has been discovered at two of our school sites in recent days. We are outraged that anyone would vandalize school property with hateful language and imaginary as they hurt our students, our staff and our entire communities. We want to discuss a path forward to support our students and promote healing in our community. And we will do so when we take up item 8.3 and hear a presentation from our African American Advisory Board. I know my colleagues will have a lot to say on this matter. And I just encourage everyone, please, we wait until 8.3 to be able to bring that up. So, thank you. With that, I will go to item 6.0, agenda adoption. And we have a quick change on the agenda adoption, the agenda on the agenda that's been requested by a board member that we move item, the public hearings, item of 11.1 and 11.2 to be right under 9.0. Can I get a motion for the change in agenda adoption? Thank you. Got a motion in a second. Everyone in favor, say aye. Yeah, so the public hearings will be moved under 9.0. Yeah, after 9.0, yes. All right, I have a motion in a second. Do I need to roll call? Okay, everyone, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, thank you. All right, item 7.0, we have public comment. And, Ms. Moretti?
Yes, we have nine public comments, public speakers wanting to make public comment. And the first is Mo Kashmiri.
Thank you, Mo. You have two minutes. Thank you.
You know, I'll actually save my comments till later. I'll pass and let my time be used for others.
Thank you, Mo. Next comment?
Our next speaker is Ace Duffy Pagan.
Hello, this is Ace Duffy Pagan. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Okay, I mean, I know that you guys just kind of already brushed a little bit about the topic, about the graffitis that happened within the school. So I just kind of want to throw some little light in there that is definitely, it's very disgusting for that behavior that took place. And just definitely want to know like what kind of, you know, steps forward are we going to be doing to make sure that our kids are feeling safe? Because, you know, they're more at school than they are mostly at their own homes. This is like a second home for them. They learn, they're supposed to be trusting their peers, their teachers and feel safe in that environment. And just, I just want to kind of know like what is going to be done about this? Because I'm really outraged by the hate crime that took place. And I feel like it's being brushed and shouldn't be. And I would like to kind of hear a little bit more about this topic and knowing what was going to happen moving forward so we can find justice and make sure our kids are feeling safe and us parents are feeling secure that our kids are safe at their schools.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy Pagan. We'll be speaking more about this in item 8.3.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Reagan King.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can. Go ahead, Mr. King.
Great. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Reagan King. My family's lived in the Sacramento County for over 20 years. My comment is regarding the racist graffiti at Abe Lincoln Elementary's and other schools and why these events shouldn't go unnoticed. I call for the investigation, for intensified investigation and prosecution of hate crimes perpetrated against these schools this week. The heinous racist and chilling effect of the vandalism creates a tremendous negative impact on children at an age where hatred and demeaning acts can severely limit their growth, sense of belonging and curiosity about the world and other people. This incident occurred during a month where we celebrate the human dignity of our African American community, where we acknowledge the essential contributions they continue to make in our nation and where we rejoice in the meaning and sense-making they add to our lives. I, my family and neighbors are greatly saddened and diminished in our humanity by these acts. As one remedy, I support curriculum and teachers who represent the lived experience of people belonging to many different communities and systems of belief. As a teenager and young adult, I was lucky to have been exposed to other people, worldviews and historical perspectives, first through school desegregation and as a seasonal farm worker in Fresno County, and later as a wide-eyed American in cultural exchange with international youth in the divided Germanies. We need our kids to be curious and outgoing about different people, not scared, simple-minded or mean. Hopefully our brave angels will prevail. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. King. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Faiza Mukhal.
Hello, all. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Faiza.
Hi, so my name is Faiza Mughal. I'm a black mom and I have three kids in your school district. If you're listening to this right now and you came out and you stood with me today at Abe Lincoln Elementary, where the latest anti-black racist vandalism happened, I want to thank you so much. Showing solidarity and wrapping our community in love was exactly what we needed. You are awesome and thank you so much. I also would like to express some demands that I think our community wants to express to Sac City Unified. Things that I would like to see coming forth are thorough investigations and prosecution of hate crimes, not just the ones that hit the news, but all of them. More important, more support Abraham Lincoln Elementary that's specific to black students and other students of color. Zero tolerance policies on racist acts and hate crimes. More culturally relevant curriculum and trainings for all teachers, parents and students. To recognize the accomplishments of African Americans during Black History Month and to integrate African Americans' rich history and contributions to America in our mainstream curriculum. Aside from these, I also need Sac City Unified School District to take a harder stance and reflect language that acknowledges our pains. When hate crimes are done with such specificity towards a community, we need you to call it out with equal specificity and support us with specificity. Anti-black racism. It's not taboo to say that out loud and to call it out. I need you guys to add it to the repertoire for your district statements moving forward. I really, really want to highlight the fact that when we have these general comments or statements addressing a very specific attack towards a very specific segment of our community, it's almost, it feels like we're being minimized, like we're invisible and like we don't count. I don't need to kind of hear the generalizations. I want the specific reassurance to our specific families who are specifically targeted. So please do add the word anti-black racism into the repertoire. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Samantha Alvarez.
Hi, my name is Samantha Alvarez and I just wanted to, to ask for the upcoming agenda redistricting, on redistricting. I don't have a particular comment on the agenda. I just wanted to request if there would be more in detail information given on the maps so that I, we are able to fully understand a lot of the discuss, a lot of the decisions behind how the maps are being formulated. That'll be awesome. Thank you. And as well, if we can get more demographics on map D and E. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. And I know tonight we'll be speaking on the redistricting and a decision will be made. We'll be putting out notifications after that. So please stay tuned. Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next and final speaker is Ingrid Hutchins and she has time from Stacy Young.
All right, four minutes, Ms. Hutchins?
Actually, I have time donated by Vanessa Kudabak, Hope Dennis and Stacy Yang.
Okay, so 10 minutes?
I won't use it all, I promise.
All right, go ahead.
All right, good evening. This week we celebrated the 100th day of school. While that date is usually known for counting collections of 100 items or the day that marks only 80 more days left in the school year, for the approximately 600 students who are still on the waiting list for independent study, it marked 100 days without instruction. This should be a concern to the board, yet I don't see it as an agenda item tonight. Instead of making the education of all students a priority, you're setting up a replay of the same situation or worse next year. It's time to require the district to open a true virtual academy. Not something thrown together at the last minute, but one that is created ahead of time so teachers and principals have time to plan, train and collaborate. Perhaps you've determined that virtual academies are a COVID thing. If so, you're wrong, but even if you were correct, COVID isn't going anywhere. You will need to provide choices for families who need or want to protect their families from COVID. You'll need to provide an education for students who are not vaccinated by the start of the school year. Even if COVID was the sole reason for opening a virtual academy, you have plenty of reasons to do so. However, as many forward-thinking districts throughout the country have discovered, there was a need for virtual academies and online learning long before COVID. Who would these academies benefit? Students who need flexible schedules. Students who learn better when they're not surrounded by dozens of other children. Students who are bullied and know it's not their responsibility to wait around for their beliefs to change. BIPOC students whose families are sick of watching racism, being met with attorneys and resolutions instead of action. Students who are gender fluid and don't want to constantly explain themselves to other people. It's not their responsibility to teach others. Students who are creative thinkers but haven't felt safe expressing themselves in the overstructured world of a physical classroom. Students who learn best by standing, moving, laying down, changing learning spaces or by staring off into the distance while someone speaks. Students who have sensory disorders that make classrooms an uncomfortable and unbearable environment. Students who have medical conditions that require them to use the restroom often and feel embarrassed when their classmates point that out. Students who enjoy learning from home but want the camaraderie camaraderie of having classmates to meet with daily. Virtual academies are not the same thing as pandemic learning. It's a choice that school districts have realized is greatly needed by a variety of students. Although the district hasn't surveyed the families in our district, we at Cap City have surveyed the families in our school. An overwhelming majority want to return in the fall and want an online component. If you add in the students who are still on the waiting list and if they've waited this long, there's a pretty good chance that they want to be enrolled. We will have enough students to open a K through fifth grade elementary school, a middle school and a high school. If we were to do that, the elementary school itself would have enough students attending it to be among the top three schools in the district in terms of students enrolled. How can you continue to ignore the education of such a large population of students? Dozens of districts throughout our state have opened some sort of online school, including a handful in our area who are able to siphon off students whose educational rights are being ignored by our own district. I'm sure I don't need to remind you that the students leaving our district equate to funds leaving our district. Small suburban districts and large urban ones alike are currently running or planning their online schools. LAUSD will open about six such schools this fall and will start enrolling students next month. Cap City has a staff of administrators and teachers who are ready to get the ball rolling so we can start planning. Our students all deserve the best education possible, but they're not going to get it if you wait for the district to determine it's important to them. You're here to represent the people who live in the district's boundaries. You're here to represent the students in our district. You are not here to entertain the whims of the superintendent nor his cabinet. Start doing what's right. More than 1,000 students are depending on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. Next speaker?
Our final speaker is Daniel Darby.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Mr. Darby.
Thank you. In honor of Black History Month, I would like to take a moment and honor one of our great principals that we have at our school. And that is Ms. Tisha Stockdale at Kit Carson International Rocket Academy. I first met her when she was just a teacher at Health Professions High School. While there, she was working diligently on her PhD to get her admin credential such that she could aspire and get a position such as principal. Not only was she a teacher working on her PhD, but she was busily working on her family, making sure that they maintain excellence in their lives as she does. Kit Carson approximately a year ago had that racial incident. And I'm glad to say that it seems that Ms. Stockdale, the principal, has helped the school heal moving forward. She is able to get excellence out of her students through motivation, not by manner of demanding, but she has set the example for the student. I hope she continues to share her story with everybody around her as an African American woman of excellence such that she can motivate all her students to be excellent every day of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. All right. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, I don't know how, 8.0, special presentations, 8.1, resolution number 3250, National Eating Disorder Awareness Week, February 21st through 27th, 2022. Mr. Husher, Ms. Flores?
Good evening. Good evening, Board President Pritchett, Superintendent and members of the board. I'm Victoria Flores. I serve as your Director of Student Support and Health Services. And we are here tonight to present resolution 3250 in recognition of National Eating Disorders Awareness Week, February 21st through February 27th. This week is dedicated to raising awareness of eating disorders and how with early detection, intervention and awareness, we can really make a positive difference. About 28.8 million Americans have a clinically significant eating disorder at some time in their life. And we know that eating disorders affect persons of every age, race, size, gender identity, sexual orientation and socioeconomic background and are really increasing among young people and younger age groups. Concerns about weight start as early as age six. That's really our kindergarten population. And we know that about a half to a third of our young people engage in weight-controlling behaviors, things like skipping meals or restricting meals or fasting. We oftentimes see this with these issues around breakfast and our students. And I know our teachers watching are probably, you know, nodding their, their heads. We know that media pressures, particularly social media, are really significant contributors. And while eating disorders are treatable, particularly if we identify them early, they're often misunderstood and stigmatized, as are many other mental health issues. You know, we also know they profoundly impact our, our children's ability to learn, impacting their ability to concentrate and attend. And this is one of those key indicators along with sleep, I'll just say, that we really need to be assessing for when children are in front of us. When was the last time you ate, right? And are you sleeping regularly? So our Board of Education recognizes the importance of supporting the health and well-being of our students. And we have undertaken efforts leveraging our COVID funds to expand the social, emotional, physical and mental health staffing to address these student needs, really raise that mental and physical health awareness and provide that critical support and resources to our students experiencing this as well as their families. So we've come before the board before with our CARES expansion plan. We have continued to hire school nurses, school social workers, student support center staff. I know other divisions are also hiring similar positions. And we will continue those expansion efforts into next year to address all of these needs, particularly those exacerbated by the COVID pandemic. So we ask the board to pass and adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Do we have any public comment?
Okay. Thank you, Victoria, for always bringing this resolution to the board. I know I've expressed on this board before that this resolution is very meaningful to me. I had an eating disorder as a, as a young adult that almost took my life. And I know that an eating disorder also affects so many other aspects of your life, not just the food portion of it. So I think it's important that we raise awareness and that we're keeping an eye on kids during lunch to make sure that things are not happening. So with that, do we have any other board comment? All right, I will take action on this. Can I get a motion? All right, motion in a second. All right, I have a motion in a second. Student preferential vote.
Aye.
Perfect. The superintendent, roll call?
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu? Member Phillips?
Aye. Thank you, board, for supporting this and thank you, Victoria. All right, item 8.2, update on mandatory COVID-19 vaccine for eligible non-exempt students and staff. Victoria, you get to stay with us. And is Mr. Lyons online with us?
He should, he should be here shortly. And if, you go ahead and bring up the PowerPoint. So, good evening again, Board President Pritchett, Superintendent, members of the board, Victoria Flores, your Director of Student Support and Health Services. And with me tonight is our Chief Information Officer, Bob Lyons, our Chief Human Resources Officer, Consey McCarran, and our Community Engagement Manager, Nikki Kangas. Next slide, please. So we usually start these presentations off with kind of what are the most recent updates? And so this past Monday, Dr. Mark Gailey, he serves as our Secretary for the California Health and Human Services Agency, held a press conference and he talked about, you know, we know February 16th, that statewide health order around masking was lifted and there was lots of excitement, you know, in the air. So individuals who are fully vaccinated, you know, are no longer required to wear a face mask indoors in, in specific settings. But we do want to stress that face masks are still required in K-12 schools and many other specified settings. So we were going back to that original mask mandate. And so he presented this slide about the future of school masking. So this is a quick screen grab from that. So we know school masking is still required as of now, so as of February 15th. However, they did discuss that on February 20- However, they did discuss that on February twenty-eighth, that CDPH will be discussing moving from a masking requirement to a masking recommendation based on local conditions. And they specifically called out some metrics that they're going to be looking at. And these include things like case rates, which we discuss every time we're here with you, talking about our, you know, vaccine or testing or COVID response, hospitalization rates, vaccination rates, which we're here on as well, as well as national and global trends. So not a whole lot of information in this announcement, but more to come on February twenty-eighth. So you know we'll be listening incredibly carefully to figure out what this means for us. We do just want to maintain our vigilance and, you know, on our surveillance, we continue to, you know, track our data and the conditions. We really do want to ensure that any decision, you know, that we make locally here, looking at those metrics, really protects the health and well-being of our students and staff, you know, particularly those choosing in-person learning. And our big lesson here, right, we know we've got to remain humble. This virus has proven to be, you know, unpredictable at times, and so we will proceed with this caution. And so we do look forward to coming back. We know there was a press conference again today where they, you know, unveiled a smarter response as well. And so we're carefully looking at that, and we'll be paying a lot of attention on the the twenty-eighth. Next slide, please. So grounding us in those case rates, these local conditions, we brought this to you last time, but we wanted to do a screenshot again of where we're sitting here locally in Sacramento County. So this is from our County Public Health COVID Dashboard. And you will see that our case rate as of this morning was thirty-six point three. It actually dropped this afternoon. I just checked again, and it's down to thirty-five point one. So you can see winter of 2020, we had that surge. Then we had the Delta surge that occurred in the fall of kind of twenty-one as schools was opening. And then we had Omicron. And so at the top of this, you know, peak, we had two-hundred-and-forty-five-point-six new cases a day per one-hundred-thousand residents. And if you can see on this little screen grab, we were down to thirty-six point three this morning. So we have really done this dramatic, you know, peak and coming down. Our positivity rate is continuing to come down as well at thirty-three point nine. So this is really great news. It's wonderful to see that we are on the backside of this surge. Next slide, please. And so some of the key tools that we had in really coping with this Omicron surge was really around this board resolution that we passed thirty-two, thirty-three, this vaccination or testing. And so we pulled out some language here that really talks about the heart and the key of this resolution and all of these efforts that we're doing, that all students and staff not yet vaccinated fully, first or second dose, or not yet eligible for vaccination. This one really jumped out at me because when we wrote this, we didn't have vaccine for five-to-eleven-year-olds. And now we do. As well as those students and staff with exemptions, remember we have that process, or conditional admissions, will be tested for COVID-19 on a regular routine basis. So this really is the crux of its vaccination or testing. And so when we look to our vaccination efforts, we've got weekly vaccine clinics happening. Sacramento County Public Health is hosting one tonight at Ethelie Baker. I believe there was also one hosted by the LGBTQ Community Center at Cracker Riverside. And of course, we have our regular CERNAS and our Friday Night Vaccine Clinics down there in your boardroom, where we're there every week. We've done over seventy-five clinics and provided over twenty-eight thousand vaccines. And then one of the things I just wanted to call out and make, you know, everyone aware is, is one of the key tools that schools use is the California Immunization Registry, and we're able to access that and clear school-required immunizations. Because COVID vaccine is not yet a school-required immunization, that's a pretty critical tool that we're really not able to readily use without explicit permission from parents. I know there's lots of wonderful people working on kind of fixing that, hopefully, you know, if we ever do have another pandemic. But that is a tool that we're really anxious to use and looking forward to when that becomes available to us. When we move over to testing, you can see that we are surveillance testing at all of our seventy-six school sites, plus a number of district locations for our departments. Right now, we're doing testing on a weekly basis based on those high case rates. And even though we're coming down, they're still, you know, they're still pretty elevated. We get tests for free from CDPH, and we've actually gotten some of those test kits from CDC as well. And then last week, we sent out at-home test kits. This week, today, they also went home again for these three-day weekends. And these were actually purchased by our district, sourced, purchased, and distributed by our amazing warehouse team. We also have two central testing locations there at CERNAS, Albert Einstein Middle School, and we are opening, I'm very excited to say we're opening a third testing location in Meadowview on the corner of Twenty-Fourth and Florin, and a building that we had there will be open from ten AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, to serve that community as well. Next slide, please. And so again, you know, this is a data viewer, a visualization of the Omicron surge and really how our vaccine and our testing strategies really helped us manage and get through. And so in this green, you know, graph, you'll see the number of COVID tests provided. And so as soon as we came back from winter break, you see these really high numbers, thirty-five thousand tests. We had never done that many. But what I want to call your attention to is you'll see we've kind of leveled out, and we are doing roughly twenty-five thousand tests a week. We'll probably level out to around twenty thousand. And that is because of our strong surveillance testing program going at every single school site. So that high number of testing is going to level and stay consistent. Over here in the blue graph, you'll see the number of positive tests for staff and students. So you can see when we were in that surge, much like we saw with the county, we see these high numbers. But what I again want to call your attention to is that last week, February seventh, almost twenty-five thousand tests, but you can see we only had four-hundred-and-ten positives. So it's not like our positive case rate dropped because we're not doing as much testing. We're doing a lot of testing, and we've watched that positivity rate fall off. And that is really because we are able to identify, track, and trace cases, and really stop that spread. And so when you look over in the orange graph, this is the number of positive cases that came to school or work. And again, you see that drop off because of that high number of testing that we're doing, we're really able to keep that surveillance, keep our eye on what's happening in our community, and get that spread down even lower. So we're really heartened by this data. We hope it gives you maybe a little pep that all of these efforts are really worth it and are really paying off to the health and well-being of our community. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Information Officer, Bob Lyons.
Next slide, please. Good evening. I'm Bob Lyons, Chief Information Officer for the district. And this slide displays the weekly attendance rate percentage for students and staff since the start of the school in January, rounded to the nearest whole number. That's one would expect after Victoria's presentation, the last slide. The positivity, as the positivity rate increased for staff and students, the attendance rate decreased. As the previous slide indicated, the positivity rate peaked the second week in January. And as you can see from this slide, the corresponding student and staff attendance rates were the lowest the second week of January. Attendance rates for staff and students have trended upwards as the positivity rate has decreased. Next slide, please. This slide is a screenshot of our student COVID vaccine dashboard for students twelve and older that was updated this morning and published on the district website. Approximately fifty-seven percent of our students twelve and older have reported full or partial vaccinations. This rate's about five percent lower than the Sacramento County Public Health Dashboard rate for the twelve-to-nineteen-year-old age group. Our student five-to-eleven age group vaccination rate is about twenty-eight percent, about seven percent lower than the thirty-five percent vaccination rate for the same Sacramento County age group. Next slide, please. This slide displays that increase in student vaccination rates for the twelve and older age group over the past two and a half weeks since Monday, January thirty-first. Student vaccination rates have increased about seven percent in the last eighteen days, representing approximately twelve hundred additional student vaccinations. On Monday, February twenty-eighth, the California Department of Public Health will announce an update on lifting K-12 required mitigation measures. Should the lifting of mitigation measures be associated with vaccination rates, the district will extend the vaccine or testing implementation deadline to the March third board meeting for a final deadline recommendation. Next slide, please. This slide is a screenshot of our testing, student testing dashboard as of this morning for all students that attend school in person. The student numbers do not include capital city students. As a reminder, only unvaccinated students, about sixty-one percent of our student population are required to test. As of this morning, about three-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-four of our students have not yet returned their consent to test forms. This represents about fourteen percent of the students that are required to test. Next slide, please. This slide displays the testing consent progress for all students in the past two and a half weeks, also from that January thirty-first date. Approximately fifty-one hundred additional students have consented the test over this timeframe. So that's been a significant number. Next slide, please. This slide is our staff vaccination dashboard and indicates vaccinated and unvaccinated staff and those filing for an exemption as of this morning. This dashboard includes both classified and certificated substitutes. Approximately eighty-six percent of staff have reported being partially or fully vaccinated, an increase of less than one percent from our last board meeting. Approximately seven percent of staff have filed for an exemption, approximately at two-tenths of a of one percent increase in the last two weeks. So not much progress on the staff side. About three-hundred-and-forty staff, or about seven percent of the total, have not yet submitted vaccination information. About three-hundred-and-forty staff have not submitted their information. One-hundred-and-seventy are substitutes, classified and certificated, that represent fifty percent of all staff without a submission. Next slide, please. This slide displays the staff vaccination progress of the last two and a half weeks. And as you can see, our staff vaccination rates have slowed down in the past two weeks to just less than one percent. Next slide, please. This slide is a representative breakdown of our non-compliant staff. As you can see, thirty-five teachers have not yet submitted any information, along with one-hundred-and-eighteen teacher substitutes and fifty-two classified subs. Staff have been working diligently to spread the word about the importance of staff submissions and have dramatically decreased noncompliance in the past few weeks. Next up is Consey McCarron, our Chief Human Resources Officer.
Thank you. And if we could just stay on that last slide for just a moment, and want to just note that in the last two weeks since the board meeting, you can see the difference there in green, the minus. Twenty-nine individuals in those different categories have been able to either share their vaccination status or their approved exemption status. So we, in addition to the things that you have heard us talk about before, you know, the four letters, the postcards, the phone calls, the site-specific notification, and the centralized help sessions, are also now doing remote site visits, looking specifically at those with three or four gathered in a particular place, so they don't have to come to us, we are going to them. In addition, we are working on individualized phone calls and messages, which is proving to be productive. As a matter of fact, just this week alone, we've been able to identify thirty additional individuals who now are fully vaccinated or have their exemption and have uploaded it into the system. We go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So when we reach, and we realize the numbering issue on this slide, but when we reach that deadline of February twenty-eighth, based on what we have for unpaid leave effective March first, aligned with agreements with SDIU Teamsters and TCS, there would be communication with those school sites, obviously needing to prepare for the three-hundred-and-forty, as Chief Lyons said, about two-hundred of those substitutes. Nonetheless, down from fourteen-hundred, that's still a significant number of individuals. So needing to be, needing to ensure that there is a plan in place for those that we are not able to get off of that list prior to February twenty-eighth. The process for an unpaid leave is that they would receive notification, be made aware. Again, the communication is happening right now. They get the official notification on February twenty-eighth that they would be placed on an unpaid leave of absence effective Tuesday, March first. The letters would go out to that effect, individuals specifically notified, and then it would go through and be processed. Again, we're working really hard to hopefully ensure that we don't have many people in that situation. We have some individuals who have indicated they do not intend to vaccinate or no exemption being requested, but we'll continue to work on that. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn it back over to, actually, over to Nikki.
Thank you, Consey. So in addition to the human resources communications that Consey spoke of that are going to be going out to individuals who are currently noncompliant or going on to unpaid leave, we're going to make sure that we're also communicating widely what our plan is to address staffing impacts throughout the district during that time. Hopefully, they will be minimal. I do think that with the deadline approaching, we may see a big uptick in compliance rates among our staff. And of course, we're going to be continuing as well to host our vaccination clinics, conduct surveillance testing, and offer testing opportunities throughout our community. So we'll be sharing that widely as we go forward and continuing outreach to collect vaccination records and testing registration as much as we can. And next slide. There's been a recent really big effort in the Communications Office as well around the take-home test kits that we were able to purchase for the district. Because of supply chain issues, we ended up having to go to a two-phase distribution. But the goal of this effort was really to get our students to be able to test on the Monday of our three-day weekends in February before they come back to school, just to minimize the spread associated with potential three-day weekend gatherings. So we were able to get a lot of really positive news coverage about this. And I think things, even though we had some supply chain issues, went relatively smoothly with the distribution effort. That's going to be continuing into tomorrow. So everybody who has students in the district, please check your students' backpacks. There's going to be flyers in there that will explain how to report your results through primary health so that the district knows what your test results are, whether they're positive, negative, or inconclusive. We would like to know to help us have the best picture of our case rates. And in addition, you can go on our website. There's also on our YouTube channel a tutorial video that shows you how to register to test and also how to report your results to the district. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Victoria.
Thank you so much. Next slide, please. So, you know, as we, as you may recall, we did a temporary pause during the Omicron wave on specific activities, really to safely keep our schools open, you know, and really slow that spread of COVID. And so, you know, as we saw in this presentation, our sharp decline of cases, we also have more tools in our toolkit now, particularly with our, you know, increasing our vaccination rates and having that really robust surveillance testing program. And so, you know, as well as all of our other health and safety mitigation measures that our school sites are just doing a phenomenal job at following. So we are really heartened to share that in consultation with Sac County Public Health and following all of our established mitigation measures, we will be returning to the following activities when our case rates are under fifty cases per one-hundred-thousand residents and holds for two weeks underneath that fifty number. So we will be going back to field trips, extracurricular activities held during or after school, nonessential tournaments or competitions. We wanted to keep with those, you know, regularly scheduled seasonal events, but sometimes, you know, our teams like to do these things outside of the season, group orientations and in-school tours. We know this.
We know this is a time of year where people are making those school choices. And then we will be lifting and removing that outdoor masking requirement, particularly just making sure that we've got some room for physical distancing. So when we look over to our Sat County COVID dashboard, as you know, our key metric, we actually saw that we initially hit this mark on February eighth. So we are really excited to announce that when we return from our three, three-day weekend on February twenty-sixth, or twenty-second, sorry, we will be lifting these temporary restrictions and going back to these activities, really getting back to the fun and the enriching activities that really support our student, our staff, and our parents and families' well-being. So we're really excited to announce this and just grateful that with all this hard work, this is where we get to be in this moment. Next slide, please. So as we wrap up our next steps, we are going to continually target, you know, an outreach to those about three thousand students and of course, those staff that are remaining, we met with our principals this week, shared dashboards with them, and all of the ways to do that relational outreach, and we've already seen a really great uptick in these numbers starting to come down. We will continue to communicate the vaccination mandate impact on staffing and services to our students and families. We're going to really, you know, keep a close eye on that, do everything we can, as Conseil and Nikki spoke to, to really reach and connect with those staff. Of course, we'll continue to consult with Sat County Public Health, as well as attending to what's going to be occurring on the state level about public health guidelines and any revisions to our plans. And then as our Chief Information Officer, Bob Lyons, shared, on February twenty-eighth, CDPH is going to make this announcement about some metrics around lifting, you know, K-12 required mitigation measures. So we don't really expect anything to change on the twenty-eighth, but we do expect to understand what those metrics are and how that will impact us. And so should the lifting of those mitigation measures be associated with vaccination rates, which it looks like it will, the district will extend the vaccine and or testing implementation deadline to our next March third board meeting for a final deadline recommendation. We really want to make sure we're aligning all of our efforts, you know, with the state and really making sure that we are doing everything we can to decrease COVID spread, you know, safely be back together, you know, for all of these beloved school activities that that we just, we enjoy. And so this concludes our presentation. Thank you so much.
President Pritchett, real quickly, I just want to ask, before we go to comments, if I can just ask Ms. Flores again to just make that last comment that you made so that there's clarity with our community, with our board, and that is the expected announcement by CDPH on February twenty-eighth, the possibility that some announcement might be tied to a metric related to vaccination rates and what it means to us. I just want to make sure that we're clear so that we can just reiterate that to our board and to our community, and then, 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 then I think we can take a public comment and board question and comment, so.
Sure, yeah, so we know that, you know, they gave us a little bit of a preview and said we're going to look at those four different metrics, right? Case rates, which we keep a close eye on, hospitalization, vaccination rates are really key, and looking at the difference amongst counties, right? You know that there is pretty broad difference. Sacramento has relatively lower vaccination rates than some of our other counties near us. Sixty-two percent of our twelve and up are vaccinated, and I believe five to eleven is around thirty-five percent. So looking at what those metrics are that the state speaks about, how they work together, and how that connects with any lifting of restrictions, and how, you know, how we can tie our efforts to really improving vaccination rates, so that, you know, hopefully we can lift some of these, these measures. So that's, we really want to align, make sure we're using all of the resources and tools we can, and so we will be paying close attention. Is that, is that all right? Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have two public comments?
Yes, two and two additional, so four total.
Okay, four total, go ahead.
The first speaker is Daniel Darby.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, Mr. Darby.
Thank you. So I find it interesting with some of the last words that Ms. Flores spoke about, in that I believe, I might be paraphrasing here, that she said we wanted to be, you know, lock step with the state guidelines or county guidelines. Yet, to the best of my knowledge, the state and the county has not mandated vaccines for students at this time, yet our district is mandating vaccines for students at this time. So I'm a little bit concerned about that, in the fact that we still have, I think it was, what, three thousand or thirty-nine hundred students that might have to be moved to distance learning, whether it's February twenty-eighth or March third, and how inadequate of an education that is, based off of the fact that there are students still waiting from the beginning of the year who cannot get into independent study. But I do not consider getting a packet a week adequate education. So I asked the board this, two questions. How many lawyers, salespeople, engineers, doctors, nurses, teachers, psychologists, managers, artists, economics, senators, and possibly even a president are we going to be throwing away by keeping this vaccine mandate and pushing students into independent study? My other question is, the dashboard is helpful, but what about the demographics of the students that are not vaccinated? It'd be interesting to see what that shows. So I have, based off of my knowledge of the schools that have high unvaccinated reporting rates, the demographics would show that the district is, how do I say, I think it's institutionalized racism is being conducted here.
Thank you, Mr. Darby, if you could please wrap it up.
Thank you. Is that institutionalized racism is happening here. We are excluding people of color on this vaccine mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is John Myers.
Good evening, board members and superintendent, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Hi, it's, like Mr. Darby said, it's deeply troubling that this board is threatening to move over three thousand students to remote learning in eleven days for noncompliance to SCUSD's own vaccine mandate. And it's also, you know, unbelievable that, you know, eleven days away, it's not on, you know, a decision on this is not on the agenda tonight. Vaccines undoubtedly help reduce transmission, hospitalization, and death. Ideally, more students would be vaccinated. However, the board must look at conditions as they exist today. The Omicron surge has largely passed. A quarter, a quarter or more of students have acquired immunity. Students have generally seen few negative effects from the Omicron variant. Teachers and staff are vaccinated and boosted, and they have, they have access to it. And here's the most important thing. COVID isolation has driven youth suicide rate to be six times higher than the youth of COVID death rate, right? So while we're out fighting this COVID vaccination fight, the isolation that we're, you know, proposing to cause from these measures is, is far more harmful to our students. Let's all agree that remote learning is a vastly inferior learning experience, and the district is in no position to provide remote learning for thousands of students. That's why this board worked hard last year to return students to class. And again, the impact of isolation on vulnerable students is even worse than the learning loss. With all these facts, the board has to recognize the idea of isolating thousands of students to a substandard remote, remote learning goes against everything that SCUSD stands for. I mean, you know, doing something like this will be felt, you know, impact thousands of families and it'll be felt for generations. And, and this is a, this is a.
Thank you, if you could please wrap it up.
Compared to a hundred percent conformity, this is a huge loss. I strongly urge SCUSD Board to step back, reassess the mission, and drop this vaccination requirement and the implicit threat of isolation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Mo Kashmiri.
Hi there, this is Mo Kashmiri. I just wanted to, I wanted to give my time to Michelle Gilbert. She is actually one of our staff who has gotten long COVID. She worked for the district for eight years as a speech-language pathologist. She worked at a lot of schools, including, you know, LDV, Hollywood Park, Bancroft, McClatchy, Sutter, and Nicholas. We, not today, but in the next meeting, we're going to be asking that the district improve an extension of her medical leave so that she can continue to have health insurance. But I think her story is very instructive of everything going on, so I'll pass my time to Michelle Gilbert.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Michelle Gilbert.
Michelle, go right ahead.
I am so glad to be able to talk to you. I did speech therapy for Sat City for eight years. I cannot work now because I got COVID in September, and I did not get well. I have long COVID. And today is actually my last day with the district. I apply for medical leave extension. Doctors, they don't know what to do. They think time will heal. I pray that is true. I want you to know COVID has wrecked my life. I cannot work, I'm in bed. I'm too dizzy, and the fatigue is so bad. Every day I hit the wall, I lose all energy, I cannot focus my eyes, I, I will not be able to speak. My speech is affected now. I cannot lift my head, and my children have to feed me and dress me. It has devastated my family. My daughters have to quit college and to work at the grocery store to support us. I just want you to know COVID is so dangerous. I'm so happy I am not dead, but my life is devastated. I'm humiliated, I'm financially struck. I miss who I used to be, I miss the kids, I miss my colleagues in my school. I miss my life. When people see me now, they knew me before, they cry. They cry. I want my life back. My family is now all vaccinated all across the country because they saw, they see me now, and it is not good. I want you to know that this can happen to anybody. I am now at mercy of this, this evil illness, and I will just beg your appropriate people to please help me get financial support and medical until I am able to breathe and stand and walk and talk, and I want to work again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert, and I'm so sorry for what you're going through. Our hearts are with you. Do you have any other public comment? All right, I will open this up for board comment. I do have some questions. First, Victoria or superintendent, can you just please reiterate what the government orders are regarding employees and vaccinations?
I'm going to defer to Victoria. Victoria, this is related to the governor, the governor's vaccine mandate, if you will.
You know, it's been a while, it's been a moment since I've looked at that, but I believe it is vaccination or weekly testing. Is that ringing? Yes, yes. And so that is what we are providing. We've asked employees, you know, who, who are not choosing to vaccinate to do that exemption process, and we have made COVID testing, you know, readily accessible. However, if you're not comfortable testing with us, that's okay as well. You can test wherever, you know, you are comfortable and upload those results to us, and we vet those on a weekly basis.
And you're speaking of employees, not, not just students, correct? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's employees.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, with the February twenty-eighth deadline, you know, vastly approaching, we want all of our students who want to remain in person to be able to attend class at their school site. We want you there. So we call on all of our families who have not met this requirement for their students to get vaccinated and report their vaccination status right away, and as Victoria said, to be able to upload it to our system. This upcoming holiday weekend provides a fantastic opportunity to be able to get this done. And for those that are planning on submitting an exemption and signing up their student for regular COVID testing, please, please, please take action right away and be able to get those exemptions in. We don't want to move that many students. This is not what we want as a board. This is not what we want as a district. This is not what is best for our students. And I also just want to note that the California statewide requirement for masks at all school sites still remains in place, and this is a policy required, that is required by the Sacramento County CDPH. And these guidelines exist to protect the health of our students, our staff, and everyone in our community. We've heard from a lot of our staff of the concerns over masks. We want to be able to protect them all, and I just want to thank Victoria and, and our team, our superintendent, for being able to get the N95s and N94s out to our staff and students for protection. So thank you for that work. Yeah, I just, this is a hard situation, and I know, I'll open this up currently to other board comments. Member Garcia?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Victoria, for another pretty thorough update. Much appreciated. I have to say that the opportunity to have field trips, to have extracurricular activities like school dances and those types of activities, even removing the masking requirement outdoors, I think many of our, our students and parents and teachers would welcome that, just to bring a little bit of normal back into, you know, just the, the daily school experience. So I know two seventh graders personally who would welcome that opportunity to have a spring school dance. So I'm also, I also want to thank staff and recognize all the hard work that it's, you know, going on, to really reach out to staff in particular, and just continue to, to encourage staff to, to vaccinate or report their, their status. But I am, I do want to recognize the bus drivers who are currently at zero, and also the nutrition services, so I think we need to lift that. They're in compliance, you know, however, they are in compliance, I think that we need to lift that up. I do have two questions. My first one is, just trying to gauge if, if for the other staff that is not in compliance, if it's still sort of hesitation about being vaccinated? Is it sort of the lack of, of knowledge or education about what is required? I mean, not necessarily by the district, but it's required by the state. So I'm just trying to figure out if there's like an education or information gap that, that the one-on-one calls or the one-on-one reach out is, is, is filling.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Yeah, the, the most productive and effective thing has been the one-on-one conversations with individuals outside of the school day, and there have been a range of things from, you know, I've had this.
And there have been a range of things from, you know, I've had this, but just haven't been sure where to go, how to upload, how to make sure that the district has it. So it's walking through that process. It's having people send some things in. And then there have been others who, I know, might sound interesting, but just who didn't know, right? And so wait, what are my choices? Some of it is just talking to them and not realizing that there is an exemption option. So I will say that the individuals that we have been able to, I mentioned, right, 30 just in, in this week, today there were a dozen. So I can't wait to see as these numbers continue to get updated. But everyone that we've spoken to so far has had a help me situation. And for whatever reason, just hasn't, hasn't gotten it. But we are walking them through. We do have, as you saw on the dashboard, some individuals, about a handful or so, that just have indicated no interest in either one. But we are, we're not finding that to be the majority.
Okay, well, you know, just, I know that's a lot of, a lot of work. It's very labor intensive, but I think it's worth it, right? Because then you just close the loop on, on that information and the status of that employee. Now, relative to the, to the deadline or the recommendation to push out the student vaccine mandate to March 3rd, and then at that point in time, you're going to come back with a final, final, you know, date. You know, just, just really thinking through where we started and where we're at, how so much has changed, you know, Omicron. Nobody saw Omicron coming when I think we, we adopted the vaccine mandate. And that was, that was rough on the system. That is rapidly receding. The, the state is moving in a direction where there's more, there are more flexibilities, flexibilities coming. And that is on, also on February 28th. We're going to get an update on that. So I'm just thinking about moving forward. This was supposed to be sort of on a parallel track, this vaccination mandate, with a parallel track of developing and building up an independent study. And the reality is that that is not in a place where it can support the number of students who haven't met, who are not in compliance. So I'm just, I'm just really worried that we continue to talk about the vaccine mandate as something that is going to happen, like with finality, this is going to be implemented. But we don't have that parallel option that needed to be in place to support our families. So I don't know if you have an answer for me or if you have some information for our families because we're moving along with the vaccine mandate. And I think there's been a lot of progress. You've done a lot of great work. Your team has done tremendous work, but this one just kind of had failure to launch. And we're just not where we need to be. So I'm just, just wondering what, anticipating what, what the March 3rd recommendation would be. Just, just trying to think through that. Superintendent, if you want to provide some information?
Yes, thank you, Member Garcia. Very important question. I, what we want to do is wait until February 28th, simply to see if any of the lifting of mitigation measures by the state are going to be tied directly to vaccination rates. We know where our vaccination rates stand right now. If we are below that threshold, and again, this is assuming that metrics are even established by the state, then we would immediately come back to the board with the recommendation about delaying the vaccination mandate, probably in line with what the state has dictated, which is what you have seen from other districts that had adopted a vaccination mandate. To your point though, and I don't want to dismiss it, you're right, and I, and I appreciate the way you've described this parallel track. We always operated on the idea that because of the challenges that we had faced around the independent study program, we provided proposals to our bargaining partner to try to figure out a creative way of mitigating those challenges. We have not reached that agreement. We are now going into fact finding, and that certainly is a consideration. But again, I would like to at least wait until the 28th to see if any of the lifting of those measures by the state are tied specifically to vaccination rates and see where we stand if in fact those metrics are established. If not, because of what you just mentioned and our inability to figure out a creative way of standing up an independent study program that could serve many more students than it has been able to serve, then a recommendation would likely be in line with what we've seen other districts adopt, which is to align the vaccination mandate to the state's vaccination mandate.
And, and the state's vaccination mandate is at the beginning of, for the beginning of the next school year, if approved by?
If the, it, it is dependent on the, on the emergency use authorization removal. So.
Or if there's legislation. So, so whatever is there at the time, it would, it would, but we would focus on the next school year. And,
Correct.
And just proceed for, with whatever current law regulations are in place.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I apologize. The queue on here still has the old names for everybody that's sitting up here. So, yeah, I apologize. So if we could get that fixed for the next meeting, that would be helpful. I will pay more attention to seat numbers on here. Member Murawski?
Well, Member Garcia said most of what I wanted to ask about, so thank you very much. Yeah, I just, I, I also, I want to echo a lot of actually what was said, especially how exciting it is to be removing outdoor masking and, and having field trips. And I just think that's a huge cause for celebration for our whole system. So I want to just take a moment to celebrate that. I, I guess a couple of observations. I'm, I'm still really disappointed to see the level of, of both exemptions, I guess, and, and just failure to file one way or the other of vaccination or an exemption. I mean, I think to, to be fair to the system, we are not in a position, as Member Garcia noted, to move thousands of students into independent study. But we don't also want to do that. We, we don't really want to have all of those students move to independent study. We want them to be vaccinated. And, and there's, you know, I think there's, there was no way for us to, to know. And there's still no way for us to, to know completely because we, for normal vaccines, you know, we have a very, very low, we had a very, very low exemption rate, even when there was a personal belief exemption. And a medical exemption rate is very, very small. So I understand, you know, it's, it's a bit newer vaccine and stuff, but like, I'm, I'm still very surprised at just the lack of compliance. And even the lack of, okay, if you don't have a vaccine, then, you know, then file an exemption request. And at least we know where everyone stands. So I'm just, I'm still a little mystified as to why, you know, why it's, there's still thousands of students that we don't have any information for. So I know it's a big question and it's a lot of work to try to get to, to that, but it seems, it seems really high to me still.
Yeah, I mean, I can share that as we've really ramped up surveillance testing, especially in our comprehensive high schools, one of the first questions we have them asking as students come through is, hey, are you vaccinated? And we've gotten a number of vaccine records in this way because we can't use that immunization registry to just look kiddos up. I mean, we can, we can, we have the ability to do it. We're not allowed to. And so we are still getting hundreds a week through those efforts. So what we, what we tend to know, which is frustrating, is our vaccination rates are probably higher. It's just getting access to those records is a challenge. And so that's what we're continuing to push on. We're, we're at nearly 3,000, you know, students left in a district this size. And our, our site leaders are, you know, doubling down and they really are, you know, working hard on this. So we are, we are still going for zero, right? And having everyone either have a vaccine record or be registered for testing. But, and we, we will continue. We will, no matter what our decision is, we will, we will not stop hosting vaccine, you know, clinics and really encouraging our students and our staff, you know, to consider this option.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that. And I would just encourage us to, to keep on doubling down. So I guess, I mean, I'm just recognizing again where, where we're at. We're not, we're not, you know, blind to the situation that, that we are in now and what our infrastructure is. So I would just, I would just ask that we, you know, at least try to provide some communication and, and clarity to, to families that, you know, about what is actually going to happen. Because I, at, at the same time, I, I'm very frustrated that I just want them to comply in one way or the other with the requirements that we're, that we're putting in. It, it is a, a huge number of, of families that we are obviously not going to shift everyone into independent study. We don't have that infrastructure. And so I think we just need to be clear and, and communicate. And this is, you know, probably outside of the health and safety wheelhouse, but we just need to communicate to, to our families of, you know, what is going on? Because I don't want anyone to, to think, oh, my God, like, you know, next week I'm going to have to do this, or I don't know what, you know, what's going on. So I just, I think just, we need, it's a fine line, whatever. We need, we need to provide, provide some clarity. And yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm just frustrated with a lot of different pieces, including that, that the lack of an agreement prevented us from creating an infrastructure for independent study, which really has, has tied our hands. So I'm, you know, a lot of frustration, but also a lot of, of celebration about just the, the general COVID situation becoming a lot better and, and looking to also look at, you know, when we get out of a, a, a place where we do have to have masks on all the time, you know? And I'm, I'm open-minded and, and willing to look at that. I don't think we're there yet, but it's something that we have to keep on our radar. So, thank you.
Thank you. Who has their light on? Is that Member Phillips? Sorry. Okay, I'm trying to count down of, oh, Member Villa and then Member Phillips.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm quick. You know, I'll just, I have a few comments. I, I, first of all, I just want to say, obviously, two years into this, what a tremendous effort has been led by the team. Victoria, we always say you continuously blow it out of the water. And we're very thankful for you and the team. I, I mean, just thinking of where we came from to where we are now, it's, it's at light at the end of the tunnel and it feels really good. I just, two, one quick question. So are you clarifying that on Tuesday, outdoor masking at school is, is, is happening? Okay, so we can communicate that. That is wonderful news. And then we will just roll out after March. Okay, I think that's my one question. I've had so many people wanting updates on that. But I do want to go back and I, you know, recovery is a serious thing and just hearing our staff member, Michelle Gilbert, and what she's going through breaks my heart. I just, it's very hard to recover from something serious and this is ongoing for her. So I just, I wanted to send my thoughts to her, but also so many of our employees and students and family and community members who have been impacted by COVID. I mean, it's definitely, it's been challenging for so many of our communities. In my district alone, it's been very challenging. So I'm just, you know, not making light of the subject that we're very excited to get out of this, but very thankful that we are. And again, sending my thoughts to everybody who's been impacted. It's a long, it's been a long two years.
Thank you, Member Villa. Member Phillips? Have we been able to track the demographics of who perhaps these 3,000 or so students are? Because I, I feel that if we know who we're dealing with, then we might be able to better outreach to them. Do we have that information?
I'm going to defer that one to Chief Information Officer.
Yes, we do have that information. We have it broken down by site. We have it broken down by ethnicity. And there's all of these subcategories. We have it broken down. And so we have targeted these groups based on, based on our, the data that we have.
How are we targeting them?
That's through our outreach program. So that's with the principles, you know, based on what sites have not have a high vac, do not have a high vaccination rate. So those principles, we've noticed a big difference in, in, it was, Hyrum Johnson had a significant decrease in, in the numbers that were not registered. And just in the last two weeks. So those are like outreach effort based, given that the principles of this data. And so they could see, this has been ongoing, but we just made a concerted effort over the last couple of weeks. So so there's other efforts. I know that Victoria is, is front and center on, on all that.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Bob. I think in addition to Member Phillips, just to further answer your question, centrally, we're trying to make sure everything is translated into as many languages as we are able to through our MOOC center. So, you know, our communications team centrally right now is, is kind of a very small team. We're doing everything that we can to do central outreach, but we're really relying on our school sites to support us. And as you know, with Omicron, that's been significantly impacted because we're also doing contract tracing and all these guideline updates and all kinds of other efforts that are kind of competing for our attention. So we acknowledge that there's been, you know, as, as much as we want to be doing more outreach into those communities that are most impacted, there have been limitations that have, you know, been the reality of our situation.
Thank you, Nikki.
All right. Can I just mention President Pritchett, Member Phillips? I, I won't ask the team, but on the presentation, you will see the nice reduction in the number of students that have yet to register. But at this point, that has become a big focus of our attention because of what you saw in terms of the surveillance testing. You can see that the number of tests that we continue to conduct week over week, even despite the leveling off or the reduction in the Omicron surge, remains pretty high. I mean, it's over 20, 20,000, 25,000 tests. Positivity rates, you saw them go down. But that's why we have continued to focus more on test registrations because we at least want to ensure that all of our students are going through that surveillance testing and, and, and we can ensure that at least we're doing that if our vaccination rates continue to stagnate and not increase. And, and I think our team has done a wonderful job of, I think, was it a month, a month and a half ago, we were at 9,000 students. And so that has gone down very significantly. And we're going to continue to push for these last remaining 3,000 or so students. But I was at McClatchy this morning. Principal Egan showed me where they were doing surveillance testing. I was at schools all of last week. I forget the, which ones they were. John Still. It feels like it was forever. But, you know, even after surveillance testing, we were seeing one, two, three positive cases. And so we will continue to focus on that. And, and I just want to continue to just say thank you to our team for, for that commitment and to you as our board for investing in that infrastructure that has us providing thousands and thousands of tests, more than I think most, most school districts as part of our strategy to, to keep our students in, in our schools through in-person instruction. That's correct. And again, just, just because I think it's always important to just be reminded of what do things look like on the ground? And again, uh, just, just because I think it's always important to just be reminded of what do things look like on the ground? Uh, Victoria, if I could ask you to just give a description to our board and to our community of what surveillance testing looks like, um, at any given school, um, every single day of the week?
Yeah. So we have a team of, of testers and we have the same team go out to the same schools so that they can develop those relationships and systems and rapport. And so, you know, in elementary school, it might look like, you know, a schedule that the site admin or the school team, um, has. We have special reports in Infinite Campus that poll every student who is required to test. And so they've got that, that schedule of students and we bring them in. They might have like a little name badge because sometimes my name is one thing, but I call myself another. And so we can make sure that we can look those students up. We look them up. They know exactly what to do with that swab. They've got it down. We process that kit and they get right out. So we can move through about, depending on how many testers we have, about 120 kids an hour. Um, so it is a really efficient and effective, you know, machine when it gets moving. It does take two, three weeks at a site. And so our high schools are just on their third week to really, you know, find that groove and get into that system. But, you know, some schools we're finishing even before lunch now, um, because they have it down so routineized. We also try to offer testing to those that are vaccinated who might want it as well. Um, but our focus is at least getting through those that are required initially. And of course, students and staff can access testing in their care room at any other time during the school, uh, the school day. So it's the same day, kind of same routine. Um, and you'll see the list of, of schools that fall on different, um, days of the week. So Monday, you know, Tuesday, this group of schools. Um, and you're welcome, you know, if you're ever curious, love to, you know, let a team know if you want to stop by. Get yourself tested.
Thank you, Victoria. And thank you to my colleagues, um, for your questions and, and staff for all the hard work that you have put into this. Uh, you know, I, I, it brings me back to, you know, when this board took up their policies on vaccinations. And I still stand, um, that I, I really wish that, you know, that the, um, the orders from the Department of Public Health were a little bit stronger and that it wasn't left up to politicians making these decisions, um, for our students. And, um, it's, you know, I've talked to a lot of families and I'm glad that you're hearing that, you know, there are students that are vaccinated and that you're finding like, oh, we just need to upload it in the system. Cause I know I talked to a lot of families in my area and they still, I still come across people that don't fully understand like, oh, you just need to upload it in the system. Or that they understand that there is personal exemptions and they have to do testing. They don't, I, I, I know that you guys have done such great work to try to get that word out. And I, I do have a couple of questions. Like I know that you had talked about like knocking on doors and, you know, sending out letters to, um, to the community members. Where are we at on all of that?
Yeah. I don't know if Nikki wants to, to chime in, but we just met with site principals again. We do have specialized, you know, reports that they can run. We've given them tutorials and videos on how to do it. I've done that for principals so that it gives you the list of students by name and, and even, you know, the ability to send direct messages. Um, but really what we're asking for at this point is that relational outreach. Who has a connection with that student, right? And it could be a broad expansive, you know, um, um, kind of definition and connecting and kind of educating them. And so I'll let Nikki, you know, speak from here.
Yeah, just, um, going back to the mailing question too. Uh, what we did was kind of a multi-tiered outreach, um, strategy for those. So it started, we had a mailing that went out to every single home right after, um, the October 12th, um, resolution was made. And it explained all the different options that were available. It was very, very detailed. Um, after that, we started to pull these reports, see who hadn't yet reported their status. And we would send them follow-up mailers that were a little bit more, here's a few simple steps of what you need to do. Um, and then following that, um, our most recent mailing effort was to, we recently, um, created a dashboard that shows, as Bob was showing, um, who is not fully vaccinated and required to test, but not yet registered to test. So we were pulling those families, sending mailers home just to try to get testing registration, um, during the Omicron wave so that their families could participate in the surveillance testing. So that's kind of how we strategize the sending of those mailers so that we were minimizing some of the, the spend and being as targeted as we could as well.
So I know we have a lot of transient families within our district and, um, and, and they move around a lot. Um, and, um, I am wondering how, what is our next step to be able to reach out to those families?
Yeah. Going back to what Victoria was saying too, um, really like pulling those reports and having that personal outreach. So, um, for, if you're 13 or over, you're able to consent yourself to testing. So we're, um, working on an effort to go into our schools where we have high densities of students who are not yet registered to test, where we can, um, try to drive testing registration in person with those students, but pull those reports in advance so that we can make sure that we're, um, reaching the right kids. Um, and then also providing the education around why they should register to test and why that's, why that's helpful and beneficial. And what we're actually finding, um, in some cases is that when we are asking kids to test, that they are furnishing proof of vaccination. They just didn't know about the vaccination requirement or how to upload their records. So we're trying to conduct that personal outreach, um, through, again, the school sites, but also doing that centrally.
And this is even in elementary?
Continue to go on, um, beyond this discussion of March 3rd or whatever the date may be.
Is this even in elementary school that we're, we're using these? That we're doing this or is this, is this just separate levels?
Not currently. So the mailers, yes, went to all homes, um, uh, at least with the initial, um, blast that we did with all families, but because those students five to 11 were not yet required, um, we didn't want to expend additional funds to, to do outreach to them at that time. Um, as far as outreach or communications we do about the efficacy and safety of the vaccine, we've had, um, town halls, uh, we share on social media. We share through our district newsletters, um, robocalls, et cetera. And, and, and our district website is a really great wealth of knowledge for really us trying to share everything we're learning as we go through this process as well.
Yeah, those are definitely great assets that we have. I just worry about families that, you know, that, that, like I said, that are transient families may not have internet access, um, and how do we reach out to those families, um, that I'm, that I'm worried about? Um, I, I promise I just have one more question. Um, and this, uh, maybe Concien Superintendent can, um, uh, get to this. This is from slide 13 that you showed earlier in regard to how many of the staff, um, are still not vaccinated. And I'm just wondering, um, there was like 118 substitutes, um, and, uh, 35 teachers and seven of them were special ed and then 52 classified substitutes. And I'm just wondering, uh, what we are currently doing to make sure that our district can still function?
Yeah, thank you, um, President Pritchett. We had, you know, this list that started at 1,400, that is down to the numbers that you see in front of you, still obviously concerning in some of those higher areas. With regards to, um, the substitutes, we are finding, again, the most successful strategy are the individual calls. But unfortunately, that many of those returns are in the late afternoon and, and evenings. And so it's just taking a little bit longer, a little bit more time. Um, the sub pool for the 118 that was 506, there are a significant majority of those that are not regularly picking up jobs right now anyways. Um, and so we, of course, will continue to try to work on that, um, but don't necessarily see the impact of that being particularly huge, given the amount of jobs that they, um, are or are not picking up. That's true, certainly for the, for the teacher pool as well as for the classified. With regards to the teachers, similarly noon duty, instructional aids, um, particular areas that we are very concerned about and continue to work to try to get those reduced. With the teachers, uh, what we are doing now is fortunately, there is not one particular school site or even a handful of school site that have a high number of teachers. The most, um, any one school site has in terms of teachers for that is, is three teachers. So we'll be working closely with the principals in those cases. If we are not through the next, you know, week and a half, able to get those numbers further down. But really it is looking at, um, some, some replacements to be able to keep it going.
Great. Thank you. And a good work of getting those numbers down. I, I appreciate all the work of our staff, um, and, and, um, our teaching staff and everyone that was involved in getting those numbers dramatically down. Superintendent?
Yes, um, thank you, President Pritchett. But I also just want to reiterate, and I think, uh, some of you have expressed this. I mean, the reality is that, uh, the resolution that the board adopted several months ago, um, was, um, a vaccination or testing mandate. And, um, and I am also frustrated, um, that, uh, if we've not been able to express and describe to every one of our employees the process of exemption, if they are still concerned about the vaccination process, um, that is going to be our focus. Um, even if we would not like to see the current, uh, data that you saw in, in, in Mr. Lyons's dashboard, the exemption rates right now stand at about 7, 8%. Those may go up, um, but I, 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 I have to start to think that, uh, those employees that have not submitted proof of vaccination need to understand the process of exemptions, uh, if, if they want to continue to, to, to serve our students as, as we hope that they do. So.
Thank you.
We will follow up with, with the board and provide an update.
Yeah, that's a great, great reminder. Thank you, Superintendent. All right. No other board comment. Thank you so much to staff for all of your hard work through this. And, uh, we will see you next time. Great job. Okay, uh, just a quick, uh, a quick announcement. Item 10.2, the MTSS, um, update. We're going to be removing that from the agenda and moving it to our next board meeting. 10.2, the MTSS update. Okay. All right.
I ask, uh, legal counsel if, if action has to be taken for that, Ms. Collins. Um, I, I do, I'm just sensitive that, uh, we did start open session a little bit late. Uh, we've made some other adjustments. Um, and our team was really excited about coming to the board um, and spending some time talking to you about something that goes to the heart of the academic, social and emotional wellbeing of our students. Um, and I think that at this stage, we would be looking at a presentation well beyond 10 o'clock, 10:30. Um, and we have a group of excited, um, staff here at, at, at Cerna. We have a principal, um, and, and we'd really want to make sure that both our board and our community, um, heard about this a little bit earlier in the board meeting. So I'm not, I'm not excited about, uh, the change, um, because it's been a long time that we have been able to focus a lot of our attention at a board meeting on, on these topics, uh, which is why we are here in the end. Um, and so, um, I, I look to, uh, legal counsel to see if that has to be, uh, an action that, that we adopt.
Yes, President Pritchett and Superintendent, you should have a motion by the board to postpone that to the next meeting and have, um, a majority of the bo, uh, board vote on that.
Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to move item 10.2, um, to the next board meeting? A motion and a second. Student preferential vote?
Aye.
All right, Superintendent Roca?
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Murawski.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Wu. Member Phillips.
Aye.
Thank you. And we're looking forward to seeing you at the next board meeting. Um, okay, we're moving on to item 8.3, the African-American Advisory Board update. Mr. Austin, welcome.
Thank you for having me. Can you all hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Uh, I will be presenting along with Terrance Gladney, the District Accountability Committee, uh, Chair for the African-American Advisory Board, excuse me, Black slash African-American Advisory Board. Um, next slide, please. So our presentation will take you through, um, a few items, including, uh, the evolution of the Black slash African-American Advisory Board, which I'll refer to often as the B slash AAAB or B AAAB. Uh, we'll take you through the, our need statement, the reason why the Black African-American Advisory Board was created, take you through some year-to-date milestones from the, uh, beginning, uh, evolution of the advisory board. We'll talk about the role and purpose of the board. We'll talk about the membership, uh, and what the board, uh, demographics are. Uh, we'll also talk about, um, an infrastructure development. Uh, we had to create the current iteration of the board, um, and we'll talk about that. And then we'll talk about the recommendations, implementation framework that we've created and talk about the alignment and refinement of that framework. And then we'll talk about some next steps and then we'll move to question and answers. Next slide, please. All right. So we'll talk about the evolution of the Black African-American Advisory Board, um, to introduce kind of why it exists. Uh, next slide, please. So, you know, uh, initially the, the Capitol Suspensions Report, along with a racist kind of science fair project incident that took place at McClatchy, uh, uh, high school, uh, was a catalyst for the creation of Superintendent's African-American Task Force, uh, excuse me, African-American Achievement Task Force, which ultimately led to what now is the Black slash African-American Advisory Board. And as I talk about the past efforts of the Black slash African-American Advisory Board, I would like to invoke the spirit of Black History Month. Next slide, please. So despite the fact that we are celebrating the 50th, 57th anniversary of the Selma to Montgomery marches, next slide. Despite the fact that we are celebrating the 68th anniversary of Brown vs. Board of Education, next slide. We are still, uh, experience a climate and culture in which Black and African-American students, staff and administrators are still experiencing racial trauma. Um, an example of that is the incidents that took place at West Campus. Next slide. Incident that took place at Kate, Kate Carson, uh, the racial slur incident, um, by a teacher, a person who was charged with being closely in contact and protecting our students. Next slide. And I'll continue to invoke history, um, by stating despite the fact that we are celebrating the 58th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act, um, another historical milestone. Next slide. We are still experiencing racial trauma in our schools in Sex City Unified School District. The Abraham Lincoln Elementary School Incident, next slide. The CK McClatchy High School Incident, which took place recently. It's, um, these, and these incidents, they speak towards a toxic environment for Black and African-American students, uh, teachers, staff and administrators. Um, and that ultimately results in a school and district climate and culture and, uh, academic outcomes that are extremely poor and they are unacceptable. Um, next slide, please. So let, let's take a look at some data. Next slide. So here you see chronic absenteeism rates. And you look at overall for Sex City Unified School District, and then you look at the data for African-American students. And here you can see that African-American students are nearly two times, uh, the amount in regards to chronic absenteeism. If we were to grade the district as our scholars are graded in the classroom, what grade would be given regarding chronic absenteeism? Next, please. I would, I would say that it would be next. Next slide. When we look at suspension rates. When we look at suspension rates, African American students are three times uh, nearly three times higher uh, than any than 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 the normal rate for students in Sac City Unified School District. What grade would you give that? Next. I'd say that'd be an F as well. We are failing African American and Black students. Next. When we look at A through G completion rate. Now, it is promising that uh, the graduation rates for Black students um, has increased. But when it comes to those students that are graduating, they're still not, a majority of them, great majority of them are still not eligible to attend a public four-year college or university right here in their own home state of California. If you look at two thousand seventeen, four years ago, um, it was less than a a third of them were eligible. And then just last year, less than half of them were eligible. What grade would you give that? Next. I'd say that'd be an F for failure. We are failing our students. This is why the Black slash African American Advisory Board exists, right? Next slide, please. Sac City Unified School District, um, it's a district and a school-site environment that has the following inequities and issues. Uh, we look at inequitable distribution of skilled, experienced teachers, insufficient and inequitable school funding, inequitable access to demanding rigorous pre-college coursework. Uh, many times during our meeting tonight, we've heard um, people mention institutional racism. We have a low, a lack of cultural competence among teachers, uh, school staff, administrators, and in the curriculum. Uh, we have a lack of supplemental services such as mentoring and tutoring uh, to young people whose backgrounds subjecting to these inequities and risk factors. Next slide, please. Um, and and that's where our, we believe our role comes in and we were set up to advise the board, superintendent, and and relevant district personnel uh, regarding the accountability of the services, the programs, the policies, and resources that directly impact the district and the school culture and climate of our classroom and the academic, socially-emotional, and personal outcomes for Black and African American students. We were also set up to review, monitor, and evaluate the district's implementation of the board-adopted Black slash African American Task Force recommendations uh, back in May uh, of two thousand nineteen. And I just want to reiterate, though the African American Achievement Task Force submitted the re- the recommendations, did a lot of work to create them, the school district adopted them. And to me, that was a commitment to implementing those recommendations and also monitoring them. Next slide, please. So, um, I was expecting to run my own slides, so I'm gonna ask the person who's doing the slides to please continue to click until you you get to the full page and and once it clicks the next and go back, please. And and I'll need your assistance to do that for all of the milestone pages. Thank you. So, um, ultimately, the um, African American Achievement Task Force was uh, initiated back in September of two thousand eighteen. Originally, it was scheduled to just uh, work from September of two thousand eighteen um, until December of two thousand eighteen. Excuse the typo there. Um, and that group of folks, they met uh, every Tuesday with few accepted, a few exceptions from O- October to May, actually. So you can see far exceeded the initial expectation of working from September to December. Uh, throughout November and December, uh, that group went through extent, an extensive data dive and can and comparative district analysis for uh, school districts that had similar dis- demographics as Sac City Unified School District, and and that included school districts that were here in California and uh, even other districts outside of California, but were similar in composition to Sac City Unified School District. Um, the original um, African American Achievement Task Force members also sponsored focus groups that included principals, uh, teachers, students, and parents to gather uh, information around what they felt about the district's uh, climate and culture and also the academic uh, outputs and 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 outcomes for uh, students in the district. Uh, next slide, please. So these were the original um, African American Achievement Task Force members. Uh, they were um, brought in from different organi- community organizations that focused on providing um, you know, focusing on African American and Black uh, community members. That also included uh, two students who were representing as well. And I want to give a special uh, shout out and thank you to those folks for their commitment and their work to create recommendations um, that were focused on improving the outcomes for Black and African American students. Next slide, please. So this is another slide where I'd appreciate if you could click through until all of the animations are complete. And I'll begin. So that group can, like I mentioned, they continued to meet past the 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 initial December eighteen, uh, two thousand eighteen uh, commitment. And in January, uh, began some work to crosswalk uh, recommendations to the Graduation Task Force, which had also created some recommendations. Uh, in March of two thousand nineteen, um, they held a community engagement session at John Still to once again engage with the community, to educate them on uh, the work they were uh, working on to to create the recommendations and also to get input from the community. Uh, and ultimately, in March, they also presented preliminary task force recommendations to Sac City Unified School Board of Education. Uh, as I mentioned before, ultimately, those recommendations were adopted in May of two thousand nineteen. Uh, in October of two thousand nineteen, um, there was the creation of an African American Achievement Task Force Transition Committee. That committee was comprised of many of the original members of the the task force. Also included parents and community members who have been engaged in the work of the task force. And they were uh, continuing on to focus on creating one of the recommendations, which was uh, focusing on creating a a Black African American Advisory Committee that would hold the district accountable to the recommendations that had been adopted. Next slide, please. So the the work continued. In July of two thousand twenty, um, those members of the transition team um, decided to begin acting as the African American Advisory Board because they knew that it would take some time to establish an actual advisory board, and they continued meeting monthly. Uh, in November through December, uh, they began outreach uh, and selection process to bring in new board members. And that was dominantly because the task force wanted to ensure that the advisory board would be comprised of at least fifty-one percent parents and guardians of African American uh, and Black students in the district. Next slide, please. Ultimately, that outreach resulted in um, bringing onboarding new board members in February of two thousand twenty-one. In March, the African American Advisory Board um, held elections and created an executive, and elected an executive committee, and also began work to solidify uh, the committee infrastructure that is now in place uh, for the board, and I'll share a little bit more about that soon. Uh, and in June, um, the Af- the Black slash African American Advisory Board began to take advantage of their stand- standing board committee um, opportunity within the Sac City Unified School District Board meetings uh, to provide monthly updates um, during the during the board meetings. Uh, in July, um, unfortunately, the advisory board had to take on a role of demanding resolution for the Kate Carson uh, incident. Uh, and then in May of two thousand twenty-one, we also um, met with Stephen Fong and held a L cap listening session to provide input and to continue to advocate for Black and African American students. Uh, and then December of two thousand twenty-one, uh, we once again um, had to shift our focus to demanding resolution for another racial incident. It was just was the West Campus High School incident. Uh, but we still continued to focus on creating the infrastructure for the board to do its work um, by uh, creating the the bylaws, and those bylaws were ratified um, in December. Uh, also focused on uh, cre- creating our, uh, developing our policies and procedures to do our work. Uh, next slide. So here you see um, the majority of the members of the current Black slash African American Advisory Board. You can see that it is made up of a diverse representation of Sac City's Black African American community. Um, and it is dominantly uh, comprised of parents and guardians, and also includes uh, community members who are focused on improving the outcomes for our students. Next slide. Here you can see the list of the board members' names. The designation of being highlighted in yellow shows the uh, board members who began their service uh, back in July of two thousand twenty. Some of them were even began their service back in September of two thousand nineteen. Uh, and then the mi- the members that are highlighted in blue are members that began in February of two thousand twenty-one. And those members are the members who were part of the outreach to ensure that there were parents uh, dominantly on the board. Next slide, please. So you can see that goal was completed. We have seventy-six percent membership of parents. Uh, we have sixty-seven percent um, of our committees are led and co-chaired, chaired and co-chaired by parents, and hundred percent of our committees uh, have parent membership. And next slide. So I spoke a little bit about our subcommittees. Here you can see our organizational chart. Uh, we, I mentioned we have an executive committee that oversees our subcommittees. And we have a district accountability subcommittee, a parent engagement subcommittee, also a communications subcommittee. Our parent engagement subcommittee um, is is charged with engaging, educating, and empowering parents so that they can become parent leaders and advocates to examine the district-wide initiatives, programs, and services. Our communications committee um, is focused on uh, and being and responsible for developing, updating, and monitoring the board's communications policies, um, as well as working in partnership with our parent engagement committee and also our district accountability committee. And then finally, our district accountability um, subcommittee are responsible to monitor the district's implementation of the adopted recommendations using an implementation framework that we've created. And myself and Mr. Gladney will get deeper into that. Next slide, please. Ultimately, we are here today. Next slide. Let's get in.
Did we lose him?
Next slide, please. Next. Thank you so much. So, uh, with, after analyzing multiple data sources, as I mentioned, reviewing research collected on best practices, the African American Achievement Task Force developed a per- preliminary recommendation that fell into two different categories. Those categories were uh, culture and climate and then academic achievement. So in culture and climate, you can see school climate, um, which was focused on making sure that the school community is inclusive of multiple experiences and fosters a culture of mutual respect and appreciation among all staff, students, and families. Uh, furthermore, in culture and climate, we have disciplinary policies and practices, uh, which was focused on ensuring that African American students and Black students are not disproportionately affected by disciplinary policies and implementation. And then in community engagement, we wanted to ensure that Black and African American families and community members are connected and engaged with the school community. Now we move over to academic achievement, and when we talk about access and inclusion, uh, we were focused on ensuring that Black and African American students have access to and are included in a rigorous and relevant coursework, extracurricular activities, and also uh, getting an opportunity for college and career preparation. And opportunities to learn, we wanted to ensure that schools are providing uh, multiple opportunities and strategies for Black and African American students to achieve academic success. And then in achievement and outcomes, we wanted to ensure that Black African American students are expected to and prepared to perform at high levels. I want to make sure the disparities in in achievement and outcomes amongst student groups and disproportionality in placement and educational programs are absolutely eliminated. Next slide, please. So ultimately, this represents the thir- the thirteen recommendations that the task force created, that once again Sac City Unified School District Board adopted in May of two thousand nineteen. These are not the full recommendations. These are the the headlines of those recommendations. I encourage everyone, especially our uh, board members and uh, district personnel uh, to please review the full recommendations. Next slide. Now, here we're taking a look at these recommendations were adopted back in May. And the board, the district was charged with implementing. The district committed to implementing them, but if you look here at what has been imp- uh, completed, it still needs to be monitored versus what's incomplete and requires a prioritization to be implemented. There are six recommendations that were implemented, but definitely need to be monitored. And I would say two of those actually the Black slash African American Advisory Board uh, would have to take credit for doing, uh, because we were the ones responsible for establishing the district-wide advisory board and establishing a Black slash African American Parent Engagement Steering Subcommittee. Um, and then monitoring is important because we know that when you look at things like the elimination of suspensions or the elimination of, well, for the defiance suspensions, it has been implemented, but we know that things like in-school suspensions are happening, removal from classroom is still happening. And then it would be good to know what supports have been funded after the divestment from the school resource officers. Um, and so, next slide. Once again, let's let's have a little grading. Uh, if you say that six of the thirteen recommendations have been fully implemented, what grade would you give to that? Excellent. Next. All right, next slide, please. So we saw the grades, but we understand that these things can and will improve if the district actually honors what they adopted and implements and monitors the recommendations um, that were provided by the African American Achievement Task Force. Though we also recognize there is a need for new recommendations, and additional recommenda- recommendations, and maybe even the adjustment of recommendations that were adopted to match the current circumstances that we're in um, because of the pandemic and other factors. Next slide, please. I mentioned, next slide, please. I mentioned that we have created an implementation framework. So we went through rigorous self-study of the district's processes to better monitor and implementate, uh, better the implementation uh, moving forward. rigorous self-study of the district's processes to better monitor and implementate uh better the implementation uh moving forward. And what we did was take a look at the intersection of the district's accountability plan. So we looked at the LCAP, the CSAS, the LCP, the ELO, and the S three. Um, next slide, please. And ultimately, what we did was take twelve of the thirteen recommendations and place them into four focus areas. We put two of them in organizational and infrastructure development. We placed four into monitoring uh discipline and suspension rates. And we placed four into improve uh improve academic achievement. Uh, and then we put two in mandatory culturally relevant professional development. Next slide, please. So when you look at the full recommendations, uh, you can see what the charge was. So in academic achievement, the district is is charged with using its current Title One, Title Three, and excuse me, Title One and S three LCAP funds to immediately identify, assess, monitor, and provide research-based tiered intervention. Right? Furthermore, the district will ultimately address learning loss uh pre, during, and after COVID, right? The we we know that there's been difficulties during COVID, but it is not an excuse to continue to implement, monitor, and address academic achievement. Um, when you look at monitoring discipline and suspension rates, the district was supposed to monitor and establish plans to and provide quarterly progress updates on school sites with over five percent variance on suspension rate disproportionality. I personally have not seen quarterly updates. Uh, I would I would expect that the district would be honoring the recommendations that they adopted and provide that information um whether we ask for it or not. Uh, I've not seen it. Um, and then when you look at mandatory culturally relevant professional development for administrators, faculty, and staff, now you see a charge for the the black slash African American Advisory Board stating that we would identify and recommend that recommend a list of vetted and qualified vendors who would be able to provide professional development opportunities, and it continues on. Um, but for us to do that, it would require that that the district is is looking for our advice, looking for our input. And so uh that is going to be the expectation moving forward if you are going to be honoring uh what you adopted. So as we go to the next page, I'll be turning things over to our district accountability subcommittee chair, Mr. Gladney.
Thank you, Julius. Um, let's take this opportunity to to recognize that the report card and the incidents that Julius referenced earlier, they're they're not moments in time. Um, in the same way that a leak tells the story of a roof that lost its integrity long before, these incidents are really a reflection of something that has been broken for so very long and continues to be broken. Um, despite the continual failure and underserving of our scholars, we maintain the recognition that the same blood beneath scars inflicted by hateful whips flows through the arms we give our children loving embraces with. Despite disproportionate traffic stops and deaths, we find strength in the brilliance of Garrett Morgan, the inventor of the traffic light. We are a people of perseverance. We honor scholars like Ronald Miles, who transformed his own struggles within our very school district with enforcement of school uniform rules into his own apparel line, which I'm wearing right now, and it says desirable dreams. He's a rose blooming in concrete. We dream big, we don't survive, we thrive. We acknowledge the broken system within we are within which we are operating and have leveraged our collective struggles, experiences, and talent as a B triple A B to articulate a plan of action to operate within it, to uproot to uproot its inherent inequities. The same drive that sparked the Black Panthers Free School Breakfast Program is in us. We are solution-oriented, actionable, and adequately equipped and prepared to affect change within this broken system. And that starts really with understanding how money moves. You guys speak your priorities with dollars, and we understand that the LCAP is your statement of priorities. And by understanding the LCAP, we can better understand how to navigate within the system. We have to understand that there are stated goals, there are stated actions, and there are metrics that will allow us to facilitate our own monitoring and to measure your implementation of those stated goals and actions. Next slide, please. What we have done is, in addition to the crosswalk of our own stated recommendations, we have aligned and identified within the district's own LCAP specific goal areas that speak specifically to African American, black and African American scholars. On this recommendations alignment, which we have developed within our own space, you can see that what we're doing is identifying the recommendations, stating not only what the goal and recommendation areas are, as well as the actions, but also identifying the measurable outcomes, the future speaking uh targets for African American students, as well as key district staff and stakeholders who should be accountable for ensuring that these the these stated goals and actions actually happen. Uh, we are measuring and identifying whether or not something is completed within specific years. And we also have a placeholder for budget considerations in the same way that you guys as a board of education should be monitoring how the dollars are spent. We look forward to monitoring not only the stated allocation of dollars, but also the progress of those expenditures within given timeframes. Next, next slide, please. This is an additional uh example of how we will continue to use our own recommendations alignment tool. Next slide, please. Again, understanding the system in which we operate will better uh allow us to navigate and and effect a more positive outcomes for our scholars. Um, what we've done here is taken the existing district timeline around the LCAP and identified opportunities for our own engagement. And we are really reshaping, as a teacher would in flipping the classroom, we're reshaping the narrative so that we are in control of engagement, and we are in control of the narrative that comes out of our body and out of our work. And if you look at this very briefly, you can see that there are multiple opportunities in which we plan and have engaged in this process and will continue to do so. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. Um, I'm sorry, go back one slide, please. Thank you. Yeah, so in addition to the LCAP, we understand that there are additional uh district reports um and additional stakeholder groups that are engaged in this work. So as we continue not only to align with the stated LCAP timeline, we look forward to synergizing our output with other stakeholders to uplift the voices of all of our different district stakeholder groups on behalf of all students, but specifically black and African American students. Next slide, please. This work is supported by an existing presence of three of our current B triple A B members on the LCAP PAC, including myself and Conrad Crump, who represent Board Member Phillips in Area Seven, as well as Denisea Fletcher, who represents Board Member Wu in Area Six. Uh, we also have the benefit and blessing of past members Tony Tinker and Cecile Nunley participating participating in our space. So through their presence, as well as my presence as a first cohort of LCAP PAC members, we have not only the historical reference of the LCAP and its inception, but also where we are now at this point and all the work in between that has brought us to this point. Next slide, please. As we look at our existing recommendations, we understand that the LCAP is a forward-speaking document. So we are assessing our existing recommendations not only to speak within the parallel framework of the LCAP in terms of what we'll do in future years, but also assessing what can we do today to speak to the now. Uh, we've had many stories in this very meeting of the impact of this pandemic. Uh, we recognize as a B triple A B that it has been an ongoing and never endemic, if you would, for black and African American scholars, not only in this district but in this country. So we are aligning not only what we're going to do moving forward, but also how can we impact change today for our scholars, given the experiences that they are walking into every day on their school campuses. And through this tool, we will assess different recommendations for relevance, alignment, feasibility, and urgency so that we can segment our priorities to address again today and tomorrow. Next slide, please. Um, obviously, we have ongoing uh obstacles that have impacted the academic achievement and outcome for our black and African American scholars. Um, and as we look forward to implementing our recommendations, we have identified the following potential barriers to us doing so successfully, including a concern that the district will fail to implement recommendations. And again, going back to Julius's slide, um, right now we're sitting at forty six percent of already board adopted recommendations that have been successfully implemented. Um, we recognize a need for differentiated recommendations to support the diverse African American community. Um, it's often a misconception that, you know, black and African American scholars are singular. Uh, we are a diaspora not only across the earth, but also within the school district. And we want to make sure, as we have with our name, speaking it into existence, that we are black and African American. We are inclusive, but we are each and every one of those scholars as well. Um, within our district, there is a legacy of mistrust and district intent. Um, you know, that that's specifically tied to outcomes, you know. I tell my students all the time, you know, show me. Um, and and that's an acknowledgement to Mr. T, who's the Vice Principal of Saturday. He tells the students as well, show me. Um, you know, what we state is one thing, but our actions dictate whether we're successful in doing so or not. Um, we have an aggressive timeline, um, but again, our scholars are impacted today. Um, there may be a potential lack of political will. There may be a worry about prioritization within fiscal and global health crisis. Um, again, we hear narratives including learning loss. Um, but the achievement gap for perceives that and also intertwined in that learning loss. So right now, while we elevate one, we can't do so without elevating and uplifting the voice of the other. Uh, and there's a need for community feedback, specifically in our space, um, and other spaces, student engagement. Uh, we want to make sure that we are truly reflecting what our students, what our scholars are seeing on a daily basis and not just look at it through the lens of adults advocating on their behalf, but really uplifting and empowering their student voice. Next slide, please, and I'll turn it back over to Julius.
Thank you, Terrence. So if you look at the May two thousand nineteen adoption date, uh, we are approaching three years since those recommendations were adopted and you know, the implementation framework that Terrence spoke about is a tool that we know will help us to do some more rigorous uh recommendation monitoring. But the expectation is that the district focuses on monitoring the recommendations and implementing uh the recommendations that have not been implemented as of yet. And for us to both do this, we're we know that it's going to take uh district data, district updates, and overall district support. Um, we also have an expectation uh to host some student and parent virtual listening sessions and learning circle uh campaigns so that we can uh get input from the community, from parents and guardians. Um, and we want to launch that in each trustee area. We would appreciate, we we would expect your support and those efforts as well. Um, and we also continue to demand that there's immediate attention and resolution to to racial incidents. Uh, we we continuously are seeing trauma take place and and our students uh and their families being re-traumatized. Um, and to do all these things, we absolutely require additional additional district staff support. Uh, we will, we we need our support to be at the same level as other um standing committees and advisory committees. Um, next slide, and we'll we'll move on to some questions and answers.
Great. Thank you so much, Julius and Terrence, for your presentation. Do we have any public comment?
We do have one public comment from Mo Cashmary.
Go ahead, Mo.
Yeah, I just wanted to um say thank you for the triple A B for their presentation and also just uh you know, I proudly represent the classified employees in SCIU, and they're constantly asking for more hours to be able to be able to be included in trainings. This isn't something that automatically happens for them, and I think it's a huge missed gap and opportunity. Um, and so, yeah, I encourage the board to continue to adopt the triple A B's recommendations and to follow through with what they said they should do. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any board comment? Okay. Um, member Wu? And then member Morosky.
Thank you very much for this presentation. When were you um expecting to or anticipating um uh putting together the uh listening, listening and learning circles?
So ideally, we would expect them to begin in April and take place throughout the remainder of the school year with uh expectation that they would take place prior to the end of this current um quarter or semester, excuse me.
Thank you. We're looking forward to helping with that. Um, all right, um, member, I have to count this out, member Morosky.
All right, thank you, and thank you so much for for this presentation. Thanks to both of you and to all the past and present members of the the uh B triple A B. So I guess I just just first want to um just really echo some of the things that were were said tonight by you, by, you know, even a public commenter in terms of, you know, the the racial trauma that is happening in our system. I was born in nineteen eighty one. I I think throughout my life, expected more, expected more from our country, from our society, expected more um just progress. Um, and I think we all have a lot of work to do, including on this board and in our society generally, uh, to to make that real. And I want to be a part of that. So I just, I'm I'm really, you know, I'm happy to be here up here with you all. I'm happy to be in this space with you tonight. We have, we have had a lot of challenges over the last almost two years. And I I am sad that that COVID has impacted, I mean, between the time in twenty nineteen when we adopted these recommendations, you know, things have not gotten better for our students and things have not gotten better in in our system and the and the disparities are probably, you know, getting worse. Um, if anything, once we actually are able to, you know, really, really measure what's what's happening for our students. So um, we just, we have a lot of work to do. I, you know, would value the ability to be, you know, help host a listening session, so I'm definitely interested in doing that. Um, I am interested in knowing what kind of district staff support you need because I I I do feel strongly and even more so, you know, in reflection on these on these incidents that have happened recently, that we owe a lot to our black and African American students. We we owe a lot to that to help lift them up specifically, as somebody said, say anti-black racism. Say, you know, the the things that have happened specifically to black and African American people in our society, and we we have to do a lot of work specific to this community, this population. And so uh what what, you know, what can we do right away? Are we are we looking at new sets of recommendations? Are we looking at, you know, just monit monitoring the implementation of the ones that 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 we have? So I I would like to, you know, have some some action items that we can that we can move forward with.
I think that, um, you know, in in the presentation, Stummer stated um to uh to honor one of our facilitators is is both and. Um, we we will look to push the already adopted recommendations. Um, we will continue to monitor their implementation as well as refine them for relevancy in the now um as we move forward as well. We've received some support from district staff around specifically um We've received some support from district staff around specifically, um, extracting where black and African American students lie within the data of the L cap. But I think that one of the challenges we have again is that, you know, there is not readily available data in a data that, in, in a district that, that proclaims to be data driven. So I would expect that that data be real time and at any given point, it would not be a delay in receiving that data because I would expect that if the true intention is to affect change and, and better outcomes, that that would already be monitored. But I think that what we encounter most often is that it's not something that is measured. So when we ask for it, it has to be created. So that means it's not being done already. So, um, you know, we, we have to be intentional. And that's what our work is and intention is really just unpacking the existing, you know, hundred page plus documents that exist and trying to make it meaningful to those scholars and families so that we really can engage them in the work and really reflect their true outcomes in the work that we're pushing you guys to do. You know, it just has to be more approachable, um, even within our own space, within our own body. We have to elevate the capacity and aptitude of our own members to navigate these things that aren't built to be understood. You know, if I go and have a conversation with the scholar, I don't speak as if I'm at Princeton University. I talk to them about what they know and what they are. I meet them where they are. But everything that we encounter is meant to be, you know, dissected by some supercomputer algorithm on volunteer time.
Yeah, yeah, totally understand that. Well, I would, you know, I would say if there's, if there's more support that we can offer from the district, I think this is, it's, this is, the issues that you raise are too important for us to be constrained by, you know, some, some level of staff support. Oh, getting a little echo, sorry. Oh, okay. Okay. Sorry. Having some audio issues in, in here. Yeah. So I think, you know, we, we, I, I think that's one thing, if, if we can provide that whatever support to analyze data to, um, understand what, where we need to target or whatever, especially after, after COVID, I would love that. And, um, I would love to, you know, have, actually our superintendent have a response, uh, or a an opportunity to, to address maybe some of the, some of the things the district has been doing or, or, um, what we, what we have, what our plans are to, to work on some of these recommendations, maybe that haven't been done yet, but at, at whatever appropriate time. Thank you again so much for all your work and I know it's, it's a lot. I appreciate it.
If I could, uh, I would like to add, uh, an additional response to your questions. Uh, Board Member Morosky. So in addition to the supports and et cetera that Terrence spoke of, that are absolutely necessary for us. Uh, we also, uh, recognize that other, um, standing and advisory committees in the board are receiving lots of district support and just in regards to, uh, the regular operations of their committee. Remind everyone, this is a fully volunteer committee and as I showed it in the, in the presentation is dominantly comprised of parents and guardians who are absolutely, uh, busy with work, with taking care of their families and et cetera. Uh, and to be charged with doing, uh, some of the pieces that we know district staff have done for other committees is, is asking a lot of them. Many of us have put in countless hours, uh, including nights like tonight. And we can tell the difference, right? Fortunately, right now, we do have, um, kind of district provided facilitation team who helps support our efforts. From a third party, but not from district person, not from district personnel. But previously during the task force and during the other iterations of the, um, advisory board, we had, uh, district staff member, um, Vincent Harris, who was supporting, uh, the work of our board. And since, since he left the district, uh, we can absolutely see the difference in district supports. Uh, we definitely greatly appreciate, um, the support that we do get from, from Deputy Superintendent Lisa Allen. I want to give a special shout out to her and thank her publicly for all of the things that she does for us. But we also recognize that, um, we need additional supports.
Well, thank, thank you Julius and, um, would love to follow up on that. And we all definitely miss Vincent quite a bit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Member Garcia.
Um, I just want to thank you for, um, just, uh, providing us with a very comprehensive, um, sort of um, overview of all the work that you've done. Um, I do remember approving this plan and these recommendations in twenty nineteen. It was one of, relatively one of the few, uh, um, early things that I, I, um, I approved. I do see that we've made progress, as you mentioned, forty-six percent. I mean, I feel like everything stopped in March of twenty twenty and it's just been trying to get through the third year with COVID. I do recognize that pre-COVID, uh, many of our black and African American students were already left behind. And that today they are even farther behind. So there's a lot of work to be done. You add on that, you add on to that, a lot of the, um, social trauma that, um, has happened over the last several years as well with George Floyd and, um, just so much going on in our society. So we know that the needs are greater than ever before. I'm committed to, um, continuing to support this work. I do see a lot of overlap in terms of your recommendations and the recommendations that we'll probably hear in the subsequent item, the L cap. I also see that, I also recall that one of our requests back in twenty nineteen was to ask the, um, your, your board to prioritize your recommendations because we were, um, we were, um, we were in, in, in a fiscal crisis. So we needed to, uh, figure out what we could support given our fiscal situation. Today we have resources, one time the vast majority of them, but we also have resources, for example, your, um, one of your recommendations is in, um, to address the inequitable distribution of skilled and experienced teachers. Now we have educator effectiveness funds that could perhaps, um, be a, um, help in, 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 um, writing that inequity. We also have, um, you know, the lack of cultural competence among teachers. We have, um, those, um, other funds that will provide and support professional development for our teachers. Um, we are committed to do that. We want to offer that. Some of that takes negotiations, as you may know, so that has a separate process, but the funds are there, the commitment is there. And I just want to make sure that, um, that I elevate that there is a lot of overlap with the L cap. We've, we've already, um, approved plans that have, for example, um, funds to hire, um, more staff, um, because we, we did not renew the, um, the contract to the, for SROs. Um, we haven't been able to hire as fast as we can, but the funds are there. Those are already been, um, approved in a budget. And then, um, lastly, the real time data, I mean, that is, that is a difficult one. It is, this is a district that wants data, wants data to help inform decision-making, but we have a huge void of data, especially when it comes to, um, the ability to understand where students are on any given day because we don't have district-wide assessments. We don't have benchmark assessment. We rely on state assessment. So it's a look back. By the time we look back, a year has gone by. We need to be able to capture this data, um, in real time throughout the year so that these, um, adjustments can be made in instruction to better support students and have higher, um, student outcomes. So I just, I just want to thank you for all the hard work. I just want to, you know, express my, my, um, commitment to continue to partner with the board, your board, um, and continue to elevate and support, um, this work that, that needs to be, um, you know, supported and elevated. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you Julius. Did you want to respond? I see both of yours and Terrence's hands up.
Yeah, I'll defer to Terrence first.
Thank you Julius and thank you, Board Member Garcia. Um, a couple of things. I think that the pandemic gave us an opportunity to really pivot. I don't know that we did. If we're saying that because there's no common assessments, we can't get the pulse of our students and that's a failure as a district. We were able to, there's no common assessments for S E L, but we were able to implement daily surveys to make sure we could monitor the temperature of the students to see where they were. Are some things necessary to be negotiated? Yes. But there are adults at the school side that if empowered to extract the feelings and emotions of our students, we can do that. Regardless of where we are in terms of a stated or real financial crisis, the reason that our recommendations overlap the L cap because the L cap's intent is to prioritize the needs of those students that have been historically underserved. However, our district has historically allocated those funds to all students. So regardless of where we are in terms of deficit or not, those specific students generate additional dollars that are to be served or, or to be expended on their specific needs. But that's what has been missing from the L cap is the identification of those students, the amount of dollars proportionally that they generate to their attendance and their presence in our district and the correlating expenditure on their needs. Not looking at, oh, we have extra dollars. So what gaps can we fill for the district? Those students that are carrying extra dollars, how do we serve their needs as a statute? That's, that's a statutory intent of L cap. So when we get there, we will continue to see overlap with the L cap because we won't need to necessarily call out and ask for additional data because it will already be spelled out in the L cap. So that's what you see through our crosswalk tool, through our implementations of our recommendations. Those tools that we have built are for those expressed purposes because it did not exist before. We saw data around students with special needs, homeless students, socio-economically impacted students, but nowhere did it say black students and where they were represented within those populations. So through Vincent Harris and Stephen Fong, we were able to get some of that articulated. But when it's spoken specifically in every conversation that this is where black and African American students exist, then we can fill out the rest of our tool to figure out what dollars they generate and then continue to measure the expenditures and the outcomes.
Thank you, Terrence. Uh, Member Rhodes? Oh, Julius, did you still want to speak? Sorry.
Yeah. Speak towards, um, the statements regarding the prioritization, uh, of the recommendations. And once again, we know that they were adopted back in, in, in May of two thousand nineteen. And we were asked to do some prioritization work and we did provide a three-year implementation plan in regards to prioritization, uh, for those recommendations. And you can see back on slide thirty, um, where it has up to one year, two years and three years. That was based off of that prioritization work that was submitted. And, uh, I'll, I'll stop there so that we can move to the next question.
Thank you Julius. Member Rhodes?
Yes, um, once again, guys, uh, thank you, uh, for this document. Um, and a couple of things, uh, one of the things that I really appreciate here, um, is the, is the alignment with the L cap. I, I think that it's, it's purposeful and it should be done. Um, and as you guys continue to get that information, uh, and really disaggregate, uh, where those dollars are going, it'll be interesting to see what this tool, um, in the future, uh, could bring. When it, uh, especially for us as board members to be able to look at that, um, and then implement. Um, and also with your data you showed us here, um, it reminds me of the, the statement of like high tides lift all boats, but, um, not necessarily all the time, especially if you don't have a boat or your boat has holes in them, right? Um, and so this is an opportunity, this document is an opportunity for our, our black and African American students, um, for us to start looking at the holes and start rebuilding, uh, boats and ships. Um, so I, I do appreciate that. My only thing that I want to say really is, um, the monitoring discipline and suspension rates and that quarterly, uh, progress update. Um, I would like to, uh, President Pritchett formally ask that that be, we get those provided quarterly. Um, and that be on our agenda moving quarterly, uh, moving forward. Um, as we start to try to tackle, uh, some of these systemic issues to, uh, hold better outcomes, uh, for our black and African American students. Um, and that's about it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Member Rhodes. And thank you both and the, the entire African American, um, uh, task force or you guys are on a task force advisory board um, for all of your hard work. And I won't echo what my colleagues have, um, have already stated, but, um, your work is, um, it's not falling on deaf ears. Um, we're listening. We will work on this together. I, I do want to just say, um, Julius, I appreciate you adding the section in there of addressing the racism within our district and the recent acts that have taken place. And, um, I do want to just say that, um, you know, the, the things that have happened in, um, recent days are just extremely painful incidences of racism that have impacted our school sites and our communities. And our district takes these types of racism very, very seriously. And, um, I know this board has directed the superintendent to investigate these incidences and take the appropriate action that's given to the facts and the circumstances in each individual situation. Each situation brings trauma to our students, our staff and our families. And so, for example, the racist graffiti at Lincoln Elementary included extremely offensive and hateful messages against black and Jewish communities. And, um, in addition to condemning and investigating these racist acts, we must also work as a community to promote racial justice, equity and understanding. It is really all hands on deck. It is not just some hands on deck. And I think that's kind of what you were alluding to. We, we have to get to, to the root of these issues, get to the root of the problems. And how do we move beyond being angry and doing something to confront and interrupt the racism as a community? I just want to say that, you know, we also need to allow these investigations that are currently taking place to, to take place. And then we will address this and they're going to require very hard conversations from all of us. Uh, I very want, um, I very, I want to have these conversations and I support those in our community who want to send a loud, clear message that we condemn racism in all of its forms. And I'm also glad that our staff is working on a series of listening circles with our students so their perspectives and concerns can be heard and can help guide through their actions. Superintendent, did you want to add? I know you were leaning in. Okay, go ahead.
Sure. If there's no other comments, I want to defer.
I do not. I do not have any.
Yes, I, I see, um, Member, um, Phillips.
Member Phillips, did you have your light on?
Nope.
Go ahead, Member Phillips.
Again, I, I, I normally not want to, to thank, but this was, uh, very informative. I am just curious and I'm asking this of my colleagues. A lot of times we want to tolerate racism and I really feel that tolerance is not something that we need to focus on. I think acceptance of the very fact that we have racism is what we need to, need to focus on. And when I say that, it means if you can accept that something exists, then it is easier to walk through and to battle as opposed to tolerating a situation. I just want to make sure that we understand that racism does exist, but we have to accept that it exists before we work on making that change.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, President Pritchett. I, I of course want to echo, um, our gratitude to, uh, both Mr. Austin, uh, Mr. Gladney, but really just as representatives of uh, an outstanding group of individuals that have spent countless, um, an outstanding group of individuals that have spent countless hours and now years in this call to action to our board and to our district, to me, to make sure that the needs of our black African-American students are met. I want to just thank our Black African-American Advisory Board for their openness in taking LCAP goals, LCAP recommendations, and tying it to recommendations that are appropriate to, to the advisory board. It is what we are trying to do. We have other reports, the CCEE, sir, as well. So this is, this should provide us the opportunity to bring together a set of recommendations that have been brought to us by a variety of partners as opposed to create new recommendations. I also want to just encourage the Black African-American Advisory Board, our Board of Education as well, as you are set to discuss goal-setting as well, eventually to evaluate me as your superintendent, that we also consider some of these recommendations as well, because I think that is, of course, the most appropriate way of acknowledging and recognizing the amount of time and effort that our colleagues have put into this work. I am even more upset and frustrated that we are in a position where we have to delay the presentation that was slated today around our culturally responsive educational service delivery model. But what I want to also just call out to our staff and make a commitment to our board and to our community is that as we come back with that presentation at the March board meeting, we tie some, some of our commentary and some of our updates more specifically and more closely to the discussion that Mr. Gladney and Mr. Austin represented on behalf of their entire advisory board. I also just want to thank both of them for the recognition and reminder of the potential barriers that, 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 that they have called out, that we need to keep in mind and ensure that we demonstrate what they have said, perhaps as a lack of political will, that we recognize the legacy of mistrust around district intent. Those are really key pieces that I think our board and I and our team need to keep in mind and squarely focused on. Yes, we do talk about data a lot. I just recently read a pretty lengthy article in Edweek that talked about the COVID academic slide could be worse than expected. But I am going to challenge myself, our board, and this community that while we have a lot of data, in fact, I think we are data-rich. In some cases, we're analysis-poor, but we have a lot more data related to the behavior, related to attendance patterns of our students than we do of the academic well-being of our students. And I'm talking about district-wide academic well-being of our students. And all of the research, as, as I look at the past recommendations about using research-based interventions, have always called out for the need to triangulate academic, behavior, attendance data. And this system is still a system that has a lot more data related to behavior. As Mr. Gladney reminded us, we have a lot of social, emotional, culture, climate. We have a lot of behavior data, which is reflected then in suspension rates and other things. We have a lot of data related to attendance. But what we are still lacking is a robust system and a robust infrastructure to be able to look at an article like Edweek that, that, that posits that the academic slide could be worse than expected, and me not be able to respond to any goal-setting from this board about where our students stand at any given point throughout the entire year, district-wide. Member Garcia mentioned it. Right now, we could do it once a year, and that's not even for all of our students. So I just want to take this as a clarion call for, for me and for our board to, in fact, demonstrate that we have the political will to change those dynamics and that current reality. We could continue to use attendance data. We could continue to use behavior data, but until we have an equal amount of academically-related data, we, we are going to be limited in our ability to, to respond as, as effectively as I think our community deserves. And, and as I hear both Mr. Austin and Mr. Gladney and see some of the slides, we have to acknowledge that we owe it to, to, to all of our students, our black and African-American students, as, as we understand, as, as we have to acknowledge. We have to demonstrate that political will as, as a board and me as a superintendent.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you again, gentlemen, for your time tonight, and we'll be seeing you very, very soon. All right. Item 9.0, Employee Organizational Reports, SETA.
David Fisher is reporting on behalf of SETA.
Good evening, David Fisher, President Sacramento City Teacher Association. Before I begin my prepared remarks, just want to also appreciate the presentation for the AAAB that was very thorough and eye-opening. There was some mention about negotiations and training. I just want to remind the board and the public that SETA has proposed mandatory unconscious bias training and anti-racist training for years for all staff members. We did finally achieve a little bit of it this school year before the year started. We had to fight pretty hard to make sure that the entire staff was included. The district only wanted to include a portion of SETA, but we did achieve some. There's a long way to go, as everyone knows. And in addition, we've also proposed restorative practices and alternatives to suspensions along with the Black Pearl School Board. So, you know, this is something that has been on our radar, we've been proposing for many years. And, you know, there's so much work to do, and this should be a place that, you know, we should all be able to come to agreement on, seeing as the rhetoric anyway, we are in agreement. Several times over the past few years, you know, we have described our relationship with the district as being at a crossroads. So unfortunately, sometimes we'll have positive momentum. For example, the constructive energy that resulted in our contract settlement in November 2017. The district has rebuffed many efforts to improve the relationships with both certificated and classified staff. In 2019, we had the first certificated strike in 30 years. And in 2021, our classified coworkers were just days away from their own strike. Under the superintendent's leadership, the district has engaged in serial unlawful actions, including 18 PERB complaints issued against the district, the most of any school district in the entire state of California. And, as you know, for the first time in Sex City history, the classified and certificated staff have conducted a vote of no confidence in the superintendent, with 97% of the staff representing 95% of the entire Sex City workforce having voted no confidence. And despite there being a national shortage of educators, the district repeatedly and unnecessarily pink slipped staff every year. Then they try to call them back every year, and then we're left with the same vacancies of the staff they pink slipped every single year. Meanwhile, continuing to demand, with your support of the board, cuts in the average educator take-home pay of $10,000 per year. And contrary to the repeated and false claims, the district was on the brink of fiscal insolvency. Sex City is in the best financial position in history. The facts are that nine of the last 10 years Sex City has operated with a surplus and now has reserve funds of $125 million, the highest it's ever been. And these are ongoing, year-to-year funds, not including any of the COVID money, any of the $300 million from the state and federal. It's ongoing funds that have been accumulated over the years by underspending on the students. At the last board meeting, Mr. Agler made a remarkable statement in response to the need to spend the district's quite considerable resources on recruiting and training staff. As we heard, Mr. Agler stated that the primary objective was not improving services to students, it was to build the district's reserve fund. And when we talk about building a reserve fund that's massively bigger than it needs to be acquired by the state, it means that the students that are filling the classrooms today or last year or the year before are bringing in resources, and you are not spending the resources on those students. That is like stealing from them. Those resources belong to them. And Mr. Agler's refusal with your approval to put students first has meant that every day about 10,000 students are without a regularly-assigned teacher in the classroom. 3,000 per day are without even a substitute teacher. You've been made aware of this and have chosen to ignore it. Significantly, the impact of this failed leadership has the greatest negative impact of our, on our students in need. With half the school year already over, Sex City still has more than 200 permanent unfilled certificated positions and more than 400 unfilled classified positions. Based on the information that we've obtained from the district, information that Mr. Agler should be sharing with all of you and the parents, the schools with the highest percentage of students with the greatest needs are the ones with the highest number of staff vacancies. We heard some of this talk in the presentation earlier about the inequity of staff being assigned to certain schools, and of course, the highest number of unfilled substitute positions on a daily basis. Let's take two schools as an example. The first is Phoebe Hurst Elementary School. It's in East Sacramento, ZIP code 95819. The median annual income in 95819 is $106,514 a year. The percentage of Phoebe Hurst students in need, as identified by the unduplicated pupil percentage, is 19.7%. That's the lowest in the district, where the average is about 70%. Between January 3rd and February 4th, Phoebe Hurst had requests for 31 substitutes, and all 31 substitute requests were filled 100%. Now let's consider Father Keith Bikini, Oak Park, ZIP code 95817. The median annual income is $50,925. The percentage of Father Keith Bikini students in need is 92.7%, which, by the way, is not even the highest in the district. Between January 3rd and February 4th, Father Keith Bikini had 76 substitute requests. 55 went unfilled, or 73%. And this pattern held through, held true throughout the entire district. This is not equity, this is not access, and it's certainly not social justice. To date, the district has rejected our reasonable proposals to address the staffing crisis. And again, with your support and approval, continues to demand $10,000 per year in cuts in the average teacher's take-home pay. There is no economist in the world who advocates addressing a staffing crisis by reducing the pay. Not one. And yet you continue your demands, which brings us to another crossroads. Our negotiations over the staffing shortage, health and safety related to COVID, and independent study is now in fact-finding. Today, the parties agreed to hold the fact-finding hearing on March 7th, with a fact-finding report due on March 17th. Fact-finding is another opportunity for you as electric leaders of the district with both the judiciary and ethical responsibility to put the needs of students first to do just that. Educators have been waiting for this board to act, but time is running out. And if the board won't act, educators certainly are ready to. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to-
Excuse me, Mo Cashmary has his hand up.
I'm sorry, Mo Cashmary has-
His hand up.
A public comment? Okay, go ahead, Mo. Two minutes.
Mo Cashmary, I'm a parent of a student, William Landon. I also represent the SEIU classified employees. You know, I just don't understand how we spoke, this board has failed. They failed, they failed, they failed. And it's our, your specific strategy of using austerity to do cuts is making all of these outcomes for black students worse. We can't improve the data, we can't improve anything if we can't get teachers in the classes, if we can't get subs to cover those teachers, if we can't get bus drivers and classifieds. I'm mad that we keep talking about this COVID crisis and act like the Omicron of the crisis is almost over. It's nowhere close to over. Our schools are in serious trouble. And this board has chosen to focus more on building reserves and giving the superintendent a raise than actually supporting the students with all the needs that we have. It just infuriates me. I will say, I try to be positive as well, that the district has made some strides recently in terms of like making some progress on negotiations around hazard pay and COVID leave, but the big issues are still there. We have so many unfilled vacant positions in classified and the certificated, and there's no plan to solve it. I don't care what this board does, if we don't have the staff to support it and implement these things properly, it's not going to work. We don't have a plan that's going to get the staff that we need to support the kids. It's not going to work. And I'm excited that three of the board members are up for election, and I hope that their community decides to challenge them. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 11.0, public hearing. Item 11.1. Oh, I apologize. Hi, Terrence, you have a public comment on 9.1?
On, on SETA report.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Again, I've been in so many different community spaces where I keep hearing the narrative that common assessments are hamstringing us. But I never hear a plan articulated on how to navigate that. I understand that things are, are negotiated. I understand that everything can't be revealed to the public, but I also do know that there are plenty of school sites that did adopt the proposed assessment framework. I do know that it was dumped on them with little to no support in terms of adoption. So I'm just asking for the full story on both sides to come out. We wouldn't, we wouldn't accept that from our, from our students. Why don't you do your homework? Oh, you know, have problems at home? Or, you know, I, I had a baseball game, I had practice, right? We have expectations of our students, but all I keep hearing adults do is blame one another in these public spaces and say, I can't do it because of them. If we are student-focused, what are you going to do to change the outcomes besides blaming what's not possible? Again, we're in Black History Month. Slavery, oppression, systemic racism, economic despair. We still stand, still we rise, but yet still you blame as to why you can't get something accomplished. You pass a resolution on Black history, but you won't embrace the spirit of Ubuntu. You won't embrace the spirit of perseverance, and instead you're providing excuses as to why outcomes cannot be achieved. That's not your goal. The pandemic is not an excuse. It's something that we navigate. How, how many walls do you have to run into before you find an alternate route? If that is truly an obstacle, are you guys not professionals, meaning staff, paid highly, handsomely to navigate these obstacles? Is that not what a professional does? They adapt. I've been in LCAP meetings, BAAA meetings, in these spaces, and all I keep hearing it, oh, we don't have common assessments. I can go right now to five different school sites and ask teachers where students are performing in reading, in math, and they will give that to me. Again, data-driven, extract the data, process it, parse it, give us something. Give us something that's actionable, directed towards outcomes. That's the responsibility of all of us.
Thank you, Terrence. All right, and I'd just like to say in response to the SETA report, it would be nice in the collective bargaining agreement if we could work on being able to assign teachers to school sites because it is disheartening to hear about so many openings at our lower-performing schools. So it's another, another topic for another day, I guess. All right, do we have any other public comment before I move on? Okay. Item, we're going to move on to item 11.0, public hearing. 11.1, Trustee Area Redistricting Hearing Regarding Proposed Trustee Area Maps and Adoption of the Resolution Approving Adjustments to the Boundaries of the District Trustee Areas Pursuant to Education Code Section 5019.5. Good evening, Mr. Reynolds.
Evening. Tonight's presentation is the same you've seen before. It's just a refresher of the redistricting maps that have been created. And so obviously, we're up to the deadline to where a decision needs to be made. So again, we'll run through this briefly and be able to answer any questions. And so we do have a total of five maps in our presentation. And if we go to the next slide, we have heard lots of public input and comments as we've been through this process over the last few months. And then the next slide. For each of our maps, again, this is just a overview. More detail was provided in previous meetings. What we're just showing you, the highlights here. Each color represents the different trustee areas proposed for that scenario. Each color represents the different trustee areas proposed for that scenario. We have notes on the map that show the changes that were taking place. Again, most of the changes are taking place between areas 2, 4, and 7, which are the light yellow, the orange, and the red colors on the map. There were some minor adjustments in areas 1, and 6, and 3, but they are the same in all the maps. In this map, we had a peak deviation of 2.12%, and so it was a very balanced option for consideration. On the next slide, again, we show an overview of the entire district, so you can see all the areas, along with where the schools are located. And they are color-coded to show you which schools are Title I, those that are shown in blue with the red labels. Yes, just for reference, we do mention the name of each of the trustees for all seven areas and the count of the schools in each trustee area. Then the next slide is map B. Again, we looked at a different geographic option for creating the balance. Again, our goal was to reduce the population in Area 2 because it was too large. And so, we had looked at different portions of Areas 4 and 7 because they were too, a little on the small side. So those were the areas we were increasing. This one had a peak deviation of 2.48%. And again, yeah, the next one shows an overview of the map and the school counts. And then in map C... Let's go to the next page. So on map C, we, again, we needed to reduce Area 2, and we only expanded Area 7 into Area 2 in this scenario. But then we had to expand Area 4 into Area 7 to create the balance. So again, just showing you different geographic solutions for bringing the population back into balance. In this scenario, it was a 2.66% deviation. And then on the next slide, again, we see it, entire of the district with all the school locations. Then in D, it's just a slight variation from map A. We have a higher peak deviation of 3.35% because we left a little more area in Area 2 and took less area away from it into Area 7. So again, it's very similar on the overall statistics. It's just less of an impact results in a higher peak deviation. And in that, if we look on the next slide, the net impact of that small adjustment was that Tahoe Elementary was left in Area 2, where it currently resides. And then finally, the next map is map E. And in this one, we left even more area within Area 2. So now we have a peak deviation of 3.99%, so just under 4%. Again, we're allowed to have a deviation of a maximum of 10% in order to be compliant. So again, less change involved here keeps the demographics more similar to they currently are, but in all the maps we created, the changes are so minor that we're not seeing more than a 1% shift in any of the racial or demographic, racial or ethnic categories. So in map E, on the next slide, when we show the schools, we can see that both Tahoe and Hiram Johnson school sites were left within Area 2, where they currently reside. And again, it's just showing you if we make less change, then you have a slightly higher peak deviation. And then finally, the next slide summarizes in text all the various changes in all the various maps with all the peak deviations shown on one page. So a nice, quick summary for you. And with that, the next page talks about the fact that we're up against the deadline to make a decision. And again, I'm here to help answer any questions you may have.
All right, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have a public comment from Samantha Alvarez.
Hi, everyone. It's Megan.
Hi.
My name is Samantha, and I'm just here to firstly, thank you all for your hard work and efforts. And it's really difficult to manage a lot of different things, and also with redistricting, it's such an important process in our day-to-day lives. You know, it will get affected for the next 10 years. So I'm also here to encourage the board members to not only choose a map today, but also make modifications to the maps so that it will follow a fairly balanced, and fairly balanced a lot of the community members in terms of demographics. I was only able to kind of view the demographics for map A, B, and C in terms of like total population and, you know, like all the other statistics. But there are some things that were a little bit alarming, so I definitely do urge the board members to take a deeper dive into a lot of those demographics and ensure that there's a fair balance between that. And I also want to express that, like Ken Reynolds mentioned, a lot of the maps are fairly similar to each other, and the district boundary stays the same for the large part. So I also strongly urge that the modifications be made based on changes of the population of demographics and maybe like following a lot of the breaks of the communities like that are there could potentially help also enable more communities of interest as well. And with this all being said as well, I also want to strongly, strongly suggest that for this upcoming redistribution, redistricting cycle, we also form a independent redistricting committee to make sure that we have more time set aside to really make sure that these maps are really reflective of our community members and really reflective of the needs and communities of interest as well. With that being said, I know there's a lot of things that go within these processes, and I really want to thank all you board members for your hard work and Ken Reynolds as well. So that will be it for my part. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez, and I appreciate your recommendation. Unfortunately, we're up against a very tight deadline of the 28th of February to have this approved. So we will be having to vote on it this evening. All right, is there any other public comment?
Yes, our next speaker is Mo Cashmary.
Ken, I was hoping you, I was hoping that you could show us exactly where we can see the demographic data for all five documents, because I looked and I couldn't find it. Can you explain to me where I can find that exactly?
Yeah. Do you know, do you know where they could find the demographic information on the website?
I looked at the redistricting website. It wasn't on there. Or if it is, I can't find it, and I'd love to have you show me where it is.
We had shared that information with the school district. Obviously, you've probably seen it for maps A, B, and C. We did send separate documents for maps D and E. But again, I'm not the person that puts it on the website, so I don't know exactly where it would have ended up.
Yeah. Anne, perhaps what we can do here very quickly, Mr. Reynolds, is if you have that document, we could share it on the screen just to save us some time and not have to try to figure out if any, if that information was put on the website or not. I can do that as well, but if there's somebody that can send us that file, we'll just share it on the screen right now.
Thank you, Mo. Did you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
See how we make this decision without having the demographic data.
Thank you. We'll see if we can get, and, all right, so with that, I will open it up for board dialogue. I just want to say that...
We have one final speaker.
Oh, we have one more public comment.
Yes, Terrence Gladney.
Hi, Terrence, go ahead.
Hey, again, tongue-in-cheek, but I hope that the inability to show the demographic data isn't due to lack of common assessments. I mean, it seems everything else is. I just, you know, I mean, maps are what they are, but, you know, in reality, you know, school sites as dots don't tell the story, right? I'm a parent that matriculated my kids through Cabral and Brandon, and up until, I guess, for, you know, until this is approved, we're always sort of like the stepchildren of Area 1, right? We're not connected to that Lampard core, we're not Crocker, we're not Cal, we're not McClatchy, we're just right on the border. So the needs often get overlooked. I've heard Board Member Hanson, when he was there, said, "I've visited all my schools in Area 1," except he hadn't visited Cabral or Brandon. So now we're being moved to Area 6, which could be great, except we're right on the northern edge of Area 6, which is predominantly thought of as Pocket and Greenhaven. So I just hope that as we move forward, you guys are mindful of where these schools actually sit and be mindful about these schools right on the border, because a lot of times they really are sort of just like nations with no leader or no true identity. So I would encourage you guys to continue to collaborate across trustee areas, right? Those are just guidelines so that we can have better representation, but the more you guys can collaborate and express and acknowledge needs across school sites or school sites that again, represent multiple trustee areas. You know, our students and our staff and our school sites can be better served. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Terrence. It brings up a great point, you know, our, as we know, these are voter registration areas that we're talking about, and unfortunately, it puts school sites in different board trustee areas, but doesn't change the home schools for our, for our students. You know, and I agree, our boards may be voted into, you know, certain areas by these lines, but we as board members, once we're elected, we need to be representing the entire district and not just specific sites, not just Area 3 as in my area, or Area 5, or Area 1, or, you know, all the areas. We need to be representing across the district. And the other thing I want to point out is, you know, we also need to be thinking, this, this is a hard decision, because we as board members put in a lot of work for our school sites that are in our areas. And, you know, we, we also need to be thinking about boards beyond us when we're gone. We won't be talking about this for another 10 years, so. Do we, do we have the, Mr. Reynolds, do we have the map yet?
I did email them over to you again. This should be coming up for the superintendent and my normal contacts for the district.
Okay, and who's going to put them on the screen?
Ask Mr. Flores.
Okay, we're going to, all right, Member Garcia. You want to wait for the maps? Okay, okay, yeah, yeah.
But the, the statistics are nearly identical. There's less than a 1% change in any of the scenarios, variance from, again, map A, so.
What I'd like to ask Mr. Reynolds is, as Mr. Flores puts them up, why don't you just walk our board and our community through those slides that you think are most relevant?
Okay.
He should be getting them.
Okay. All right, we're getting them up on the screen now.
Yeah, this, this one is map D. And if we go to the next slide, it will show us, I believe we've already seen.
I think the other ones were given to the community back on our November 4th meeting, and are on our website is my understanding. It's, it's D and E that are, that we're going to be looking at.
Right. Yeah, this one's D. And so again, this is the overview of the entire district. And then scroll down some more. This was the detail that we showed in our presentation this evening. Then the next slide down mentions the schools that were changed, which we summarized with our newer maps. And then on the next slide, I believe we have the school view that we, again, presented in the meeting this evening. And then the next two slides should be the new ones. This one shows the population details for the total population, where we calculated the 3.35% peak deviation. And then on the following slide is all the racial and ethnic data that was being requested. Again, this information is very similar to this data from map A, it was just a slight variation. The top section shows the racial and ethnic details for each of the seven trustee areas, along with the total district, for the total population. The middle section of this chart, again, shows that same racial and ethnic information just for the adult age population, 18 and over. And then the bottom section of this chart shows the citizen voting age population, which is done as a survey that Census does. And again, very similar racial and ethnic data. And so if you look at each individual cell on this chart, it very closely resembles the current demographics and map A demographics. And then the other PDF has the same information for map E. So we start with an overview of the entire district. And then the next slide down showed the detailed view that we saw earlier this evening, followed by a listing of the schools. Again, very few schools impacted in map E because we had made even fewer amount of changes to keep it closer to its current boundary lines. And then the next slide shows the school overview that we saw earlier this evening. And then our next slide is our population. And again, I referenced the 3.99% peak deviation, but here you can see the actual population, which, within each of the seven areas, in comparison to our ideal population, on how that number was calculated. And then finally, the last slide of this package shows all the demographic details for the total population along the top section, the 18 and over population in the middle section, and the citizen voting age population in the bottom section. And that's what was included in these additional details that were available and shared with the district.
Remember, Woo's trying to wake us all up? All right, Member Garcia, do you want to speak now?
Sure. Thank you, Ken, for the deeper dive. I think it is important to see the demographics on, you know, different levels. At the end of the day, trustee Area 2 is who trustee Area 2 is. I don't know how you change the demographics when the area is, is, you know, 60% white and 18 to 19% Latino, maybe 4, 4 to 5% black. So, so I just, yeah, I don't know how more you can diversify an area like that. So, which is why I'm focused on the effort to keep the, the, the schools that are currently in Area 2, in Area 2, to diversify at least the student demographics in that way for the trustee in Area 2. It's me today, it'll be somebody else tomorrow, or... It's me today, it'll be somebody else tomorrow, or in five years, or whenever. I just think that's really important. Um, so with that, when the, um, when the appropriate time, uh, comes, I would like to make a motion to move forward, um, Map B, B as in boy, um, move forward with a vote. So, again, when the when the appropriate time, um, comes. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move any forward, I was just reminded that it's 10:38 and we need to extend the meeting. Um, let's say, an an hour? Um, yeah, about an hour. So if I can get a motion to approve to 11:39? Motion? Approve, second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you. Okay, go ahead. Are there any other board comment? Oh, Member Villa?
Hello. Um, I've spoken on this in the past, and, um, in Area Four, you know, I I received an email on this, and I've talked to a few folks, but this one really stood out to me. It's similar to what Member Garcia had mentioned, is, you know, our our communities are who our communities are. And, uh, but I got an email and someone said, "Well, we can't just treat our families or our community almost like confetti and just move it around to what we personally need." These are just who we represent and where folks primarily live or walk to school, um, or work. And I think it's important that we truly represent the folks that primarily are in our communities, um, folks that we're seeing on the way to work, on the way to school. Um, so I'm going to go the opposite way of Member Garcia. And when the time comes, I would like to move Map A. I think the least deviation, uh, especially with the demographics that we have, um, it's going to be the smallest impact for our families. Um, and again, these these maps aren't for today, as many of us have spoken. This is, you know, for the next 10 years. So it's really important that we're representing folks for not just the upcoming elections, but for many years to come. Um, and again, I'm just going to go with the demographics that I've seen. I know we've seen this chart before. Um, we received that information, but also just based off the map itself, based off the lines of the neighborhood, um, and the less deviation of the impacts of our family.
Thank you. Um, Number Eight, Member Phillips.
Um, I would like to say that I am more in support of, um, Map B. And that is because we need to make sure that, I guess it's a level of cultural humility that we might be looking at. Um, Map, Map A unfortunately moves Tahoe and Hiram Johnson out of Area Two. I I think that it it creates, uh, I guess, an elitist kind of situation where you have, and if I'm looking at it and my colors are right, um, if we go with Map A, it's literally, we're going to have one Title I school in Area Two. Tahoe, just like what Mr. Gladney said, Tahoe is going to be sitting on the the outer edges of Area Seven. And it it makes more sense, because this, and if I'm correct, somebody, please correct me if I'm wrong. This is related to voter population, not school location within the the areas. So the schools are going to stay where they are. But what area they are in makes a lot more sense to me as important, because I I just, I, it's hard for me to to find the words to say this, but, I mean, you know, trustee Garcia said it best that, you know, and and, uh, trustee Villas, that the the neighborhood and the areas are what they are. But changing them to take out two schools of high need makes it difficult for those in that area, especially Area Two, to recognize that there are still struggles. And, um, I'm sure someone can talk about how money is situated in terms of who's getting what. But I I just, some part of me thinks that it needs to be seen that there are schools in need, with students in need, in every area. And just having one in Area Two, I I'm having trouble accepting that part.
Thank you. Member Morowski?
Um, thank you. Uh, I just, I I do want to echo, um, the words of of Member Phillips and and in support of Member Garcia as well. I I do, I I I do agree. It 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 strikes me strangely to have, um, to have the the area and and the schools situated that way as it as it comes across in in Map A. And it does seem like, and, correct me if I'm wrong, the those those two schools are currently in Area Two? Is that right? Okay, so like carving them out seems, anyway. Uh, minimizing changes seems seems good. Um, the the total degree of difference in terms of the population differential between A and B is is very small. The demographics are almost the same in all the all the maps. So, um, I think, you know, at the end of the day, it's the changes are, the changes are small, but it 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 could be meaningful in this in in this small instance. So I think if we, you know, we we do need to move forward tonight. So I would, you know, um, if there's enough agreement, I would just, I would recommend just moving forward with Map E. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Morowski. Yeah, and I I I do agree that, I feel that each board member, I remember Garcia has made a a good point that I think, feel like each board member does, should have a Title I school within their area. Um, and looking at the school maps, the trustee boundary maps, I'm actually more in favor of Map D, um, which does leave, uh, Tahoe Elementary within the, um, Area Two, area that moved with Hiram Johnson over to Area Four. Um, and if I if I read it right on the demographic or the the deviations, I think that actually took a part of my area up and moved it over and um, and left me with less, which I'm not, I'm trying, trying to make a point that I'm not looking at things of that nature. I'm looking more of like what makes the most sense of how this map is. So I'm more in favor of Map D. So I believe, if there's no other board, um, conversation, um, I believe that Member Garcia first had, um, her hand up for a, um, for a motion. All right, I have a I have a motion and a second, a student preferential vote.
Um, do you want to tell me the map?
Can you clarify the motion? Oh, the the motion is, um, for, it was A, correct? B, I'm sorry. So I know, we're going over a lot of maps tonight. This is, um, for approval of Map B, as in boy.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Uh, Superintendent?
Member Pritchett?
No.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
No.
Member Wu?
All right, thank you.
Member Grace, Member Phillips?
Sorry, motion passes? All right, thank you. For that dialogue. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for your hard work on all of this. We'll see you in 10 years.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and prepare all the documents to get filed by the end of the month for you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right. All right. Um, let's see, we are at 11.1 Public Hearing, AV 1200 Disclosure and Approval of SEIU Local 1021 COVID-19 Employee Leave and Hazard Paid MOU of 2122.
Good evening, President Pritchett, Members of the Board, Superintendent Aguilar. I'm Jessica Steele, Director of County Services, and I'll be, I'm presenting the AV 1200 Disclosure and Disclosure and Approval of the SEIU Local. Um, this is a part of the AV 1200 process in which we present at a public hearing the key provisions of the agreement, as well as the fiscal impact to the district. Next slide, please. This slide highlights the key provisions, um, the first being that it is non-president setting, and the second being that it was fully executed on February 4th, 2022, and this expires on, at the end of the current school year. Next slide, please. Uh, this highlights the fiscal impact, a total of approximately 4.3 million in one-time classified salaries and benefits, um, to be funded with federal and state COVID relief one-time funding sources. And with that, that takes us to the Q and A.
Oh, my gosh. All right, is there a public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment from Mo Kashmir.
Go ahead, Mo.
Um, Mo Kashmir, I did want to say thank you to the board for, uh, making this happen. Uh, I do think this is a step in the positive direction. Um, although I do, I have, even though if I ruled the world, um, everyone would get vaccinated, especially given what we heard earlier from Gilbert. Um, I do think that we should also extend this same, uh, offer to, uh, unvaccinated employees that have filed their exemptions kindly. Uh, the reason for that is I believe that it could be violation of, you know, it could be considered religious or disability discrimination to deny people if they're saying they have a religious right to it, or if they're saying they have medical conditions, um, that make it more complicated. So again, I would urge the the group adopt a similar MOU also for the people who have filed exemptions, which would be a very small, you know, it'd be a small amount and a it wouldn't be as much money as the big, as what we've already done. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment?
Uh, no, no further public comment.
Hi, I'll leave this open to the board. Member Moros, uh, no, Member Garcia, Garcia, sorry.
Yeah.
I have to.
Um, well, I just, I just am glad that we're here, um, that we have an agreement. Um, I like agreements. Um, so, um, but I do have a clarifying question. In terms of the, um, of the leave, um, the district, the district leave and how it, um, how it aligns or not with the state leave, because the state just authorized, um, COVID leave. So I don't know if if it means it's the the state superseding the district leave, does that mean that the state supplants or supplements? Um, the district leave? And I hope that's clear, because, um, when I read the language, it wasn't so clear to me, which is why probably my question is not that clear. But anyway, just just seeking clarification on that.
Sure, thank you, Member Garcia. Um, in discussion, discussions with negotiations team, um, they clarified that the, um, SB 114 for the California paid sick leave, um, does, uh, supplant the language within the MOU. So it's, um, in place of, not addition to.
Okay. And, um, related to the public comment, that is, um, that'll have to go through the proper, um, channels. Um, and, um, and we'll leave it at that. So, um, thank you.
Any other board comment? All right, so tonight, we're going to ratify the agreement between Sac City. Oh. Member, Member Morowski?
Hi, thank you, thank you. So I'm so, um, happy to be here and and just recognizing our our hardworking staff and those who who got fully vaccinated. And it's a real testament to them protecting themselves and their community. And I'm just super happy, um, that we can do this agreement. I just wanted to to ask one clarifying question about, um, so if you're, if you're fully vaccinated by a certain, uh, time, then you will get one amount, and then fully vaccinated by a later time, you will get a different amount. Is that, do I understand that right?
Correct. Correct, Member Morowski.
Okay, so it's one or the other?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry, he's talking and yawning at the same time. I apologize. All right, uh, so tonight, we're ratifying an agreement between Sac City Unified School District and SEIU Local 1021, the district's labor partner that represents many staff who provide services that benefit students, including bus drivers, bus attendants, nutrition services staff, custodians, and our instructional aides. Uh, we support the well-being of all of our students and all of our staff. And we recognize and appreciate the invaluable and essential work, um, that of staff to keep our schools open, safe, and serving our students during the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, at this board's direction, um, the Sacramento City Unified School District has made extraordinary efforts through the collective bargaining, um, process to reach an agreement that provides one-time stipends for staff that provide, um, important services to stu, to our students this year and every year, I should say. Um, this signed agreement provides the following. A leave for staff who need to take time off during, um, due to COVID, a stipend for staff who are fully vaccinated, and an additional stipend for those who attend work for scheduled shifts on Fridays, Mondays, and Tuesdays after a holiday to mitigate the COVID-19-related staffing shortage, um, challenges. I am so glad that this agreement was reached and it is ratified with this board action tonight. And I also just want to acknowledge that through the, um, the collective bargaining process, the district has also offered an additional stipend for bus drivers, bus attendants, and nutrition services staff in recognition of the important, um, and important direct services provided for students. The proposed additional stipends, um, for bus drivers, bus attendants, and nutrition staffs, um, was actually rejected by our labor partners. And so I'm hoping that we can continue working continuously with, um, with our SEIU labor partners. And I just want to thank, um, SEIU and our district staff, um, for making this happen. Is there any other? All right, with that, I will take a motion to approve. Second, I wasn't even done talking. To approve AV 1200 disclosure. All right, I got a motion and a second, a student preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Superintendent, roll call.
Uh, yes, Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu? Member Phillips?
Aye. President Pritchett, if I can just comment very quickly.
Yes.
You mentioned it, but I also just wanted to reiterate, um, uh, that, um, we did include as part of this MOU, uh, in recognition of some of our staffing shortages that have impacted us and everyone else, um, this idea that, uh, we know that we need our employees to really focus on trying to serve our students, uh, particularly on Mondays, on Fridays, and on Tuesdays after the holidays, which are days that we continue to see increased absences. Uh, I'd like to make sure that we are, uh, able to report back to the board, um, uh, when when the MOU expires, which is on June 30th, um, uh, what those, uh, data outcomes result in. Um, uh, because we we've never, we've not done this. We thought that this was a innovative, creative approach to try to address some of our challenges. Um, but I do want to report back to the board, uh, how successful we are, given the partnership and, uh, the agreement, uh, from SEIU, again, in spirit, uh, that this is something that, uh, we should attempt to do, given the staffing shortages. And I think we owe it to the board and to our community to report back on that data point, uh, specifically.
Great, thank you, Superintendent. Thank you again, um, to all involved. All right, we are going to move back, wow, that was just in time. Um, we're going to move back up to item, uh, 10.1 Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP Annual Update. Mr. Ramirez Fong. Good evening.
Good evening, uh, Board Members, Superintendent, Members of the public and colleagues. I just want to acknowledge the time and and that this is a budgeted for a 20-minute item and that it is an item that really, it does encompass a large amount of information. And that we do want to appoint any Members of the public that are interested to the full documents that are attached. Um, the full bid year LCAP update or report, as we call it, and the one-time supplement are both attached to this item. Uh, they're both required elements of the LCAP process and the intended They're both required elements of the LCAP process and the intention of the actual presentation is going to be to provide an orientation to what is in those documents and to be able to make some general comments about the types of information that's in the documents, rather than, of course, going through all 100 pages. So I just want to note that we'll be as efficient as possible while providing that orientation, and then we would definitely point folks to that, those resources. Next slide, please. So we do always include these, we're committed to including our core value and our guiding principle at the front of our presentations for LCAP, and each time we try to anchor in, I'm anchoring tonight to these dual words of system and students. When we see, have, when we have a very large document like the mid-year report or the LCAP itself, and it really does show us many data points, many updates across the system, but we don't ever want to lose sight of the fact that those data points and those updates represent the sum total of our individual students, and we're striving to serve them every day. Next slide, please. This is a new slide, and it's, what we're referring to as an LCAP summary statement, it's been used by some of our leaders recently and our staff to really reflect on and set priorities aligned to the LCAP. And this is actually word for word from the LCAP, it's on page 17 of our current LCAP. Just in this final sentence, you can see some echoes to our actual LCAP goals in this idea of needing to include an equitable and inclusive educational program for all students, regardless of zip code, school, classroom, program choice, et cetera. And just want to acknowledge that a lot of the conversations this evening, particularly those from the BAAA, really speak very powerfully to, to this and how challenging it is, the work that we're trying to do, you know, disrupting the status quo and equitably allocating resources are not things that are easily achieved. Next slide, please. So some very brief background, the annual update process for the LCAP is something that happens every year. So much of what you're seeing tonight is not new or anomalous, but what is new for this current year is the keying into a particular date. And so, you know, per legislation, we have to report to our governing board on these particular mid-year outcome data and updates on our actions by February 28th, so by the end of this month. And then also, there's a unique document called the Supplement to the Annual Update that we're including, and that will be actually part of the final LCAP package in June. And so we're here presenting on some of the same information you'd find in any normal LCAP a little earlier than it might be in some cases. And so some of the data you'll see will be to-date data that will certainly then be updated as we go to the final LCAP in June. Next slide, please. So some very broad overarching thoughts, you know, when you look at any mid-year data, you're always looking at the context of when it's being provided. So looking, for example, at the percentage of students who have completed their FAFSA in February or January is very different than being able to report that in June or May, and so we're going to expect to see lower numbers, and that number will grow. But in particular, for this year, you know, we're looking at impacts that are connected to the pandemic. And so when you talk about the implementation of actions, we've heard tonight about staffing shortages and the impacts that are exacerbated, you know, both by the surges and by the ongoing pandemic. That's created breaks in our data, we've heard that as well, you know, the difference in absenteeism and suspension rate, we talked about in our presentation last meeting, and we're looking at all the different ways we've had to look at data in context and be able to understand what it is and what it isn't when you look across the years. So just some overarching thoughts. Next slide, please. And this is a helpful diagram that we pulled from a presentation from some colleagues in Riverside, and really appreciate them providing that. The, it's essentially saying that, you know, when we look at anything mid-year, we're going to have some knowns, some unknowns, and some in-progress, and, and not every action will fit cleanly into a given bucket. You know, when you talk about metrics, some of our most recent knowns are the end-of-year outcome data from 2021, which was not available at the time the LCAP was adopted. In other cases, it's some mid-year data for data that we can pull mid-year. In other cases, we're still in progress implementing something, we'll have it later in the spring. So it's just really important to see that when you're mid-year, not everything's going to fit cleanly into one bucket. Next slide, please. And similarly for our actions, you know, it's fair to say that most LCAP actions are in progress because they are, you know, big pieces of work that we're moving forward annually, but there are some where pieces are in progress and other pieces are not yet started, and some of that's COVID-related, some of it's not. And then for very, you know, your rare cases, we might have completed something that was only an early year action. So just again, for the mid-year update, we're going to then provide additional updates on what's happening throughout March, April, May, as we get closer to the end of the year. The next 10 slides, as we get into them, are really designed to provide a sense of what's in the mid-year update, and it includes some reference slides that I won't spend a lot of time on, but they're there really for readers who may not have seen past presentations and seen the goal statements or some of the list of actions and metrics. So the board has seen some of those slides in the past presentations, and they're there for, for reference, and we're looking at particular goals one and two from the LCAP and some representative metrics and actions from those goals, because of course, it'd be too exhaustive to go through all of them. So I will skip over a few of the slides briefly and then stop and linger on the slides that are showing the content of the mid-year update. Next slide, please. So here we have goal one for those that may have not seen it before, and it's really focused on college and career readiness and, you know, this aspiration that 100% of all of our students will graduate college and career-ready. Next slide, please. And again, the reference slide for the metrics that are incorporated into that goal one area for this current LCAP. Next slide. So here is just some high-level examples of the data that's in the mid-year update. Would definitely bring attention to the bottom statement that for the majority of our LCAP metrics across all of our goals, and anywhere we're available, the data is disaggregated. And we had a chance to feature some of that in our last LCAP presentation, where we showed some of those recent indicators for all of our student groups broken out. Here, really, the intent is to show the range of what types of data we have available at the mid-year, so you'll notice that for indicators like graduation rate or state seal of by literacy, the most recent data we have available is the end-of-year 2021 data, which wasn't in the previous LCAP or the current LCAP, I should say, at the previous adoption time. For other data, we actually have a current kind of mid-year data point, like FAFSA completion. And in other cases, like for our college and career indicator, that's on the dashboard and it's not going to be reported in the same way, so it's not going to be available for the current year, but we'll be able to utilize, of course, other data sources to look at that same area. So you really see across the mid-year report, a variety of data reporting availability. Next slide, please. Again, a reference for the types of actions that are in goal one, and if we look at the next slide, you'll see the media reporting. So for each action in the LCAP, we have what was the projected or budgeted expenditure as of the late spring last year, and you have now, what is it, we're calling a mid-year estimated actual. We're calling it a mid-year estimated actual because we're estimated as of this mid-year point, and that will, in many cases, be updated later in the year. So it's based on the current information available at this time, so that would be actual expenditures, encumbrances, you know, dollars that have not been officially recognized as being spent but are planned, and then also just the anticipation of staff going what is yet to come, and so be able to project ahead. And then in the right column, you'll see what staff has been able to provide in terms of some updates, some potential next steps, and just some context to what's happening now on the ground. And what I will say also is that these first two are pretty representative of many of the larger actions in the mid-year report where implementation is progressing as planned for the most part, but there are definitely impacts with regard to COVID in terms of having to flex to the context. Next slide, please. So goal two, our second example, is keyed into that tier-one program, that foundational educational experience, really ensuring that all students have access to a standards-aligned instructional program. Next slide. And the reference to the metrics that are embedded there. And, and as we go to the next slide, we'll stop here and again, see some of the range of what is available, and here you see some of the historically included metrics like English Language Arts State Assessment, you know, we don't have that as a mid-year update because it wasn't offered most recently in the last year, and we're awaiting that next administration. Of course, we then have some things that we're updating from the previous year, like the advanced placement rates, some in-progress data, like our reclassification rate, and then new data that we have added in those recent LCAP that we're bringing online, like least restrictive environment. And again, for the full major reports attached, where possible, we have the disaggregated data. Next slide, please. And again, a reference slide for folks that may not have seen it, the types of actions that are inside of goal two. Next slide. Just note a typo here, that should say goal two actions. Here you can see going to the right, you know, some of the updates for the implementation, your particular numbers of staff train. If you look at our theater arts and social emotional learning pilot program, being able to quantify the number of classrooms, so really, across the various actions, staff have been able to provide some, in many cases, detailed updates as to where things are at, you know, through about January into early February. Next slide, please. So this slide summarizes the change in the overall budget projections from where we were in the late spring to where we are here in, you know, January, February. And, you know, the, the big difference that we point the reader to is the all-federal funds row, and, you know, following all of our conversations in the fall around SRR3, that shouldn't be a surprise, you know, we have received a significant amount of federal funding, one-time federal funding in the last several months, going back to the fall that happened after the adoption of the LCAP. And so this is designed to show, you know, the committee, the public, the board, what that change has been in terms of those overall projections for this current 2122 year. Next slide, please. So the next few slides are just some background on what is in the supplement now. So we're now stepping from the annual update, which is that kind of typical information that goes into an LCAP to this one-time document called the supplement, and what that supplement is really oriented towards is looking at these additional sources of state or federal funding and looking at some implementation updates and some engagement. And so here on this first prompt, it's really keyed into, you know, how we are or have engaged or will engage with our partners around these other funds. And you can see here a table that we provided showing some of the additional funds, and these would be in addition to the SRR3 grant funds that we've already had a lot of reporting on, and we'll talk about later in this presentation. If this includes the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program Funds or ELOP, we've heard recently at the board about the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant, which you approved. There's also the 2COM A through G Completion Improvement Grant Program, and then also the Additional Concentration Grant Add-on Funds, which the board's heard about in past presentations. Next slide, please. Prompt two is really keyed into the, the specific use of the Additional Concentration Grant Add-on Funding, so we'll, we'll talk about that in a moment. And then prompt three talks about how we've engaged around the one-time federal funds, and so that is, again, going to be an opportunity for us to point to the SRR3 process. Next slide, please. And then last, but at least for the background, prompt four really looks at the implementation of how we're, you know, doing with regards to our status in the SRR3, and then that last prompt, prompt five is a holistic question of how are we using all of our fiscal resources in alignment with our plans? They keyed that into the LCAP, and then also our return to health plan. Next slide, please. So for prompt one, we really are pointing to being able to build upon some of the past engagement we've done, also talking about, you know, this engagement that is to come. You know, we know that when we are developing the ELOP, the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, and also the A through G Plan, there's going to be engagement around there, being able to continue providing input opportunities about additional concentration grant funds in the LCAP process, and then just really acknowledging that engagement's ongoing. So many of these funds run through 2025, 26, or certainly through subsequent years, and that these processes are open and input is always welcome. Next slide, please. With regard to the Additional Concentration Grant Funding, the intended use there is really to be able to maintain the classroom teacher staffing levels, we've heard a lot about staffing this evening, at sites in the face of declining enrollment. You can see some data about how many of our schools have high duplicated people percentages, and particularly looking at how, you know, reductions in staffing at those sites would particularly impact the students that we know have the highest needs, and so really ensuring that those schools are able to maintain staffing in the face of declining enrollment is, is a key, you know, action. Next slide, please. With regard to educational partner engagement for one-time federal funds, you know, without being extremely redundant, because you've heard about that through our SRR plan, you know, we engage in a number of ways. Inside the SRR plan itself, we've detailed some of the, you know, input that came through that process, and then also really broadly, our federal funds beyond SRR3, the supplement itself includes a, a listing of some of the presentations that have come to the board dating back through the last year, which covered, you know, various cares and other dollars and allowed for opportunities for the public to, to hear about and comment on those. Next slide, please. So the next few slides give some examples of the detailed implementation status updates we have in the supplement around SRR3. If you recall, our SRR3 plan is that approximately $154 million that we were allocated and are, have the next now two and a half years to spend, and, you know, just want to acknowledge upfront that hiring and staffing have been challenges, you know, but if we really step back and, and think about the timeline, we approved the plan at the end of October, the county approved it in December, and so really, it's been a short amount of time that we've been moving forward and staff have been doing that actively. And in that time, that short time, we've also had the Omicron surge, and so, you know, this is the beginning of our SRR3 journey, even though we are very aware of the urgency, and so we are excited to see a lot more movement forward as we, as we progress. Next slide, please. So you can see here some examples of the types of status updates we've been able to provide around various actions, and those actions include things like our college and career readiness labs at the middle schools, where implementation is largely going to occur in subsequent years, but the, all the planning that was planned for this year is well underway, and that's including identification of our co-participants, looking at the classrooms, starting to put the logistical pieces in place, and so that's exciting to see actions like that, which are in the planning phase for year one, moving forward. You know, being able to see education training specialists hired, that's an action that went to the board previously, and what SRR3 funding is going to do is maintain that action in 22, 23, and 23, 24. And so you see a, a cluster of actions inside of the update where it's acknowledging that SRR3 funds are not necessarily fully implemented at this point in terms of the dollars, but they're going to ensure that these things that have been put in motion are going to be there for the following years. And then seeing some immediate impacts, such as our nutrition services hiring bonuses and the increased hours, and, and seeing the impacts there on the ground. Next slide, please. And again, some additional actions. Just wanted to point out on this slide that what is nice to see inside the staff's update is just how aligned a lot of the actions are directly to the things we talked about in the LCAP, and we've heard about alignment this evening, and, and it's nice to see that when you are putting these additional dollars, that they are in support of the existing plans that are in place. Next slide, please. And that really leads right into prompt five, which is how are we using all of our resources, whether it be one-time federal dollars, our standard LCAP dollars, new concentration grant funds in alignment with plans, and, and what we've done inside the section inside the supplement is really point to a few of the key steps along the way, and going back to April, you know, there was some nice pillars established in the guiding principles from business services around some of our, our cares and other dollars, and that led it to June, where we had a framework presented by the Academic and Student Support Office, where they laid out the type of actions that would be in service of students the coming year. And then that itself led into the SRR3 plan, where a lot of those actions from the June presentation were directly built and extended, and then that's all kind of been nice to see come through other plans as well, where we see the recruitment and retention focus and our educator effectiveness block grant come in and address some of the issues that we've heard, you know, identify these needs over time, and, and ongoing the LCAP and our return to health plan will continue to guide us. Next slide, please. So for next steps, just want to reiterate that, you know, the annual update information that is in the mid-year report, it will be updated further, so as more data becomes available, expenditure projections change, and more implementation status becomes available, that will work its way into the final LCAP. And the supplement itself is going to be included in the final LCAP package, so that document does live on in time. Next slide, please. A note that's really important is that the documents attached to the board item do include a dependent charter documents as well for all five of those schools. And next slide, please. So some closing thoughts, you know, just wanted to note that the COVID-19 pandemic is something that does get referenced, because in the particular, we're talking about data, and you're talking about implementation status, it is, it is hard not to, you know, see the implications and impacts across, across. It is it is hard not to, you know, see the implications and impacts across across the board. But despite that, really, what I think the media report does show is that, you know, the district is committed to moving forward despite those challenges. And and in some cases, things are not where we thought they'd be because of some of the challenges, but they still are advancing and just really want to acknowledge and thank all the folks that that make that happen. So that is the last slide, I believe. If you go to the next slide, I believe it is an opportunity for questions and answers.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez-Fong. I do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment from Terrence Gladney.
Terrence.
Hey, I want to thank Stephen for the the work he's doing in leading our LCAP pack. It's come a long way since my first time sitting at the table in that space. And one of the sentiments I want to uplift from our space is really just we see an opportunity and a need for staff, for our board, to really just be proactive, right? We 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 say, oh, no, the pandemic is here. How are we going to react? Oh, no, we don't have this. How are we going to react? Or this didn't work. How do we pivot? Or we didn't expend dollars in this space. Let's put it in a reserve. But yet we still see gaps widening. So, you know, there's one thing to have a set of priorities. But if we have a contingency plan, you know, I'm I'm big on watching Property Brothers, right? Every episode, you know, someone's roof is leaking or the foundation is a little cracked. And they've already built in a contingency plan that says, guess what? We put money aside for that. I don't know that our reserve fund fits that purpose. I think it fits some other stated purpose, but it's not for redirecting dollars to the needs of our scholars, right? So in a given year, when Steven was talking about mid-year updates to mid-year assessments, that's what we're looking towards is what is our plan A, B, C? What is our good, better, best plan? So that even if we end up with extra dollars, then we can start to really attack some of the additional needs and not do things like in the middle of a school year, start considering cuts to sports and things that are really necessary for the social emotional well-being of our students that really bring students in the building, especially when we're in the trend of losing students. The things that are critical and make a student want to just start by showing up at campus is what allows us to layer on the other services to build them into productive citizens. So let's just be a little bit more mindful in our planning. And I know this tough and and it's a lot of work, but that's the work that we have before us. So, you know, you know, in 10, 15, 20 years, we all want to say, you know, you guys, it was too much work. So we couldn't get it done. And then we see these scholars walking along the street and wondering, you know, how we failed them. And we know today where the opportunities lie. So thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Terrence. Do we have any additional public comment?
No, that was it.
All right, I open up for board comment. Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Steve. I did hear some of your presentation yesterday at DLEC. So it was it was good to get a little bit deeper into the into the information in our packet. I just do have a couple of questions, just sort of general questions. We do have, I see that we have sort of goals set in terms of percentages. The one that I'm going to mention is the A through G completion. We have it at X percent, right? That's our goal for that X percent of our students are complete A through G courses, et cetera. But we're also getting the A through G implementation grants. I'm wondering, does that give us the opportunity to have either higher goals, more aggressive goals? Just how does that feed into the goals that are in the LCAP? And then I have a couple of other questions.
Well, we certainly always have the ability to, you know, evolve, modify our goals. You know, that's something that is is kind of a fundamental part of the LCAP is we're able to constantly improve, you know, evolve it based on, you know, what's really happening at the district level. I can't speak specifically what might or will happen with the A through G grant, but I think it's a point you're making is if we know that we're going to have a more robust effort in any area, it certainly is worthy of us reevaluating our goals in that area. And then also how we articulate our actions and whether or not there's new metrics that we can actually incorporate that might be more nuanced and better measure. You know, with A through G in particular, we know that some of those nine through 12 indicators have longer tails. You know, if we're putting our efforts, let's say, at the eighth and ninth grade transition level, then we'll see that really impact, you know, three, four years down the road. Whereas if we're doing something where we're boosting into the 11th grade class, we might see that more rapidly. And so those are all those considerations we can certainly make.
Excellent. And I did see the Rosa Parks or middle school, you know, I guess aligned with Luther Burbank. So that's that's exciting stuff. I did have another question about, well, this one maybe for the superintendent. Just two questions in the interest of time. There's one priority in the LCAP. It's the parent leadership pathway workshop participation. So this is like a, I guess, what comes to mind is like parent university in terms of how to how to become comfortable in being a volunteer, an active volunteer, not only at the school site, but at the district. But I didn't see, and maybe this is going to be a recommendation for the next sort of reiteration of the LCAP. I think when our parents go through something like that, they should complete the the pathway with also being ready to volunteer at a school site, meaning that fingerprints are taken and all that stuff is covered. So it's almost like part of the incentive to or or part of the benefit of participating in that pathway. I do see a separate small allocation to fingerprinting. And I know that we've, you know, even during difficult times, we really fought to keep that because we felt it was really important for many of our parents who may not be able to pay for that that process and and get cleared so that they can go volunteer in our classroom. So it's just something that I thought might, we might be able to like tighten up a little bit. And then before my last question to the superintendent, a lot of these projected expenditures and estimated actual expenditures, there's a big gap. So because we didn't expect Omicron, right? So there's a lot of delay in the work because we've just been surviving in terms of trying to keep the doors open. So the hiring hasn't been as fast, even when we're trying to hire the capacity, the workforce isn't there. So I think I just want you to sort of clarify for us that even if we have unspent funds in the LCAP, those dollars don't, we don't, they don't go to the general fund. We don't spend them elsewhere. So they stay with the students that are generating those dollars and they stay, if you will, if if you will, with the LCAP moving forward. So can you clarify a little bit about what happens to the unspent dollars? Because I think we're going to see a lot of unspent dollars and it's not because we're not trying to spend them. It's just that it's been really hard to spend them. And it's happening all over California with other districts too, so.
Yeah, what I can offer, you know, and then I'll certainly defer to others if they want to expand. You know, each resource has its own, you know, specific requirements. If you look at, you know, the general fund is very different than federal dollars. This actually is going to be the first instance of the LCAP process where supplemental and concentration dollars will be required to, you know, be presented in terms of carryover. The LCAP now, the template itself from the state actually has built-in components for us to quantify the amount of, you know, our percentage of increased improved services. And that works out into a formula to actually generate what amount of carryover is going to be required to be then addressed in the following year. So so I think in the spirit of what you're asking, yes, the the dollars that are being generated by these students, there's a now, there's a mechanism in place with the LCAP itself to ensure that those dollars that are staying to still then increase or improve services for the unduplicated pupils. Of course, then for Title I, II, and III, there's their own requirements there on the federal side.
Right, okay. And then my last question, it's for the superintendent. I saw the summer school, just been thinking a lot about summer school and how exciting it was last year to have kids back on on school sites and access to enrichment programs, access to learning. And I I can't imagine what it's going to look like this year. I feel like our workforce is burnt out. And I'm just trying to figure out, how do you even ask teachers to teach in the summer when this is like the third year of just brutal teaching? And so wondering what what kind of programs might be available that still not only support our students with enrichment opportunities, but also help accelerate their academic learning? So just just really trying to think about what summer might look like.
Thank you for the question. I did want to comment on a couple of other things, Member Garcia, based on your questions and comments. Just want to remind our board and our community that at the last board meeting, we did present to you the latest update with respect to where we stand with some of the information that Mr. Ramirez-Fong presented. In some of the expenditures, you can see that we have not filled every single position that we had allocated for. At the last board meeting, we reminded the board and our community of the $17.7 million allocation that you approved in June to hire, I want to say about 145 or so full-time employees. Some of them are reflected here. I believe that at the time, we had filled about 54, 55% of those positions. We're already in February, almost March. So your point is well taken. And we, while we are going to continue to strive to fill those vacancies, we know that at some point, the funds will expire and we owe it to the board per your direction to us and the resolution that you passed indicating that one-time funds should not be used for ongoing expenditures, that we do have to come back and continue to provide updates to you on those on those positions. In terms of summer school, I think you make a very valid point, Member Garcia. And that's going to require a real careful assessment because, as you know, throughout the pandemic, we also relied very heavily on our community-based organizations who operated our learning hubs during the school closures that entire period. And then during the Omicron wave, we also extended and expanded some contracts with those same community-based organizations to help us serve our students while we were seeing a lot of staff vacancies. So I would put them in the same category as everyone else, that they have been doing just stellar work. And we're going to have to assess what is actually viable because we are confronting these very stark realities of of what's happened to the social and emotional academic well-being of our students. And I don't think that any of us here, and certainly I think for the board, that you would want us not to do anything during the summer. But it is going to require some careful assessment of what's actually viable and realistic. And we will, we will report back to the board in the next coming board meetings.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if there's a program would look different. Not that it wouldn't, there wouldn't be a program. I'm not advocating for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Morowski.
Thank you. Just congrats on this report. It's a ton of work and there's been a lot of progress. I think there's still some areas that we probably need to make more progress on, but it's a hard work to implement in this environment. So just kudos for all the work that's been done. I just did want to raise one thing about about some of the goals that that we've set and specifically our our goal around graduation. So I I had pushed, when we had these conversations, I had pushed pretty hard to adopt a bold goal around 100% of our students graduating. And we, you know, we added on to that, that they graduate with, you know, a post-secondary plan, right? So I'm still not seeing in our strategies, and maybe this is, you know, a bigger conversation, but it's one that I want to raise to my colleagues. Because I had thought when we when we talked about this goal, that we would really take it seriously and be thinking about, it's kind of a paradigm shift of what do we have to do to ensure that 100, that we leave no one behind? Like, that looks very, very different from what we're doing now. And even though all, I mean, all of this work is amazing and all of it is valuable and all of it is helping. But at some level, it's like, we, you know, we can't, we can't say, oh, we have a goal. And then in two years, we're still going to be leaving one in 10 of our Black and African-American students behind with no high school diploma. Like, I would like to see us all think bigger about how we can shift, shift the conversation to just the expectation that everyone will at least have the high school diploma and and some kind of post-secondary plan. So I just, I just wanted to raise that as, you know, I just, I think we were trying to be ambitious, but I'm not sure if our implementation here is going to be, is going to get us to the goal that we really want to get to in any period of time. And if there's challenges in in meeting that goal, then I think we need to talk through of like, well, what it, what would it take? What would it really take? Because that's something that I think we can rally the community around too. If if we need more resources, if we need, you know, like, that's a basic thing. Everyone, you know, that should be a basic kind of guarantee of our system, I feel like. And we should be able to get everyone there. So we have a long way to go and I would just like to see more being thinking about about all of them. But again, thank you for all the great work and look forward to continuing this conversation soon.
Mike was on mute. Sorry. Thank you. I agree with all of my colleagues. I thank you so much for all the hard work that is put into this. And this is an informational item. So thank you again, Mr. Ramirez-Fong. Thanks for staying on with us so late. All right. What? Huh? Oh, we're we're moving, we're moving. Item 12.0 consent agenda. Can I get a motion? All right, student preferential vote?
Yes, on my open session item.
Thank you, Superintendent Rolcall.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Morowski.
Aye.
Member Villa.
I don't think she's on right now.
Member Wu. Member Phillips.
Aye.
All right. Item 13.0, business and financial information reports received. We don't have any other public comment, correct? All right, good. Item 410.0, future board meetings and dates, March 3rd and March 17th. Can I get a motion for adjournment? Second, all in favor say aye. All right, good night.